The city of Lawrence, fifteen hundred kids walk through the doors of our fourteen sites every day here in Lawrence. Our services are essential to working with families, or to working families here in Lawrence. We provide their children with quality programs at affordable prices, giving them peace of mind while they are working, but their children are being guided in academics, character development, and healthy lifestyles. As our mayor said, "Lights On" celebrates the importance of after-school programming. Today, we have members from right across the river, the Boys and Girls Club at Woodland, to present thank you messages. Okay. Will you get them our thank you cards? Get each one a thank you card, okay?
All right.
Thank you again for helping keep our lights on after school.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. Good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, would you like for me to read the proclamation?
I would.
Well, don't go away. This is a proclamation, "Whereas the Boys and Girls Club of Lawrence has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, and is grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. And whereas "Lights On After School," a national celebration of after-school programs on October twenty-second promotes the critical importance of the quality after-school programs in the lives of children, their families, and their communities. And whereas more than twenty-eight million children in the United States have parents who work outside the home, and fifteen million children have no place to go after school. And whereas many after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfall, so severe that they are being forced to close the doors and turn off their lights. Now therefore, I am Mike Amick, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Thursday, October twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen, as "Lights On After School" in Lawrence." I want to thank everybody, especially thank the Boys and Girls Club for the great programs that they provide for the kids of this community. And I want to thank, you know, our community for stepping up and helping such a great organization to make sure that, you know, the kids in our community do have a place to go after school, you know, while families, you know, do what moms and dads do to make sure that there's shelter for the kids and, you know, all the necessary things to grow up in a great family situation. So, I want to thank you for all the outstanding work that you do and making sure that these kids' lives are, I think they're truly impacted by the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, mayors, from time to time, get to surprise everybody with extra proclamations. And I forgot to tell you, I'm sorry, Diane. But while we've got kids here, I think one of the things that happens is usually this time of year, we do a proclamation about trick-or-treating, right? So you're going to have to bear with me because I looked up an old proclamation a while ago. One of the beauties of having these iPads, I can look things up in the past. So, I have an extra proclamation to happen, if that can happen.
Wonderful.
Oh, yeah, great. Okay. This is a proclamation, "Whereas the City of Lawrence Parks and Recreation Department encourages trick-or-treaters to make their Halloween trick-or-treating house calls between six-thirty and eight-thirty on Saturday, October thirty-first. And whereas homeowners are asked to turn on their porch lights during these hours to assist costume youth. And whereas parents are encouraged to accompany children and inspect treats before they are eaten, making sure that all treats are in original packaging. And whereas trick-or-treaters should remain in familiar neighborhoods, skip houses that do not have porch lights on, and wear clothes that are bright in color and not flammable, and use the sidewalks whenever venturing between houses." So, now therefore, I am Mike Amick, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, between the hours of six-thirty and eight-thirty P.M., to be Halloween trick-or-treating night. So, thank you all. Have fun. Be careful, okay? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Bye-bye. So if we can have that, and Brandon, if you need to find that, go to last year's October twenty-eighth agenda and make the appropriate changes, okay? Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Are there, item number five has been pulled because those appointments were made a week ago, I want everybody to know that. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a member of the commission would like to have removed, separate discussion? Okay? So any item on the consent agenda that a member of the public would like to have removed for separate consideration? Any items to be removed in the consent agenda? Okay, hearing done, we need to add to the consent agenda claims to two-hundred-and-fifty-seven vendors in the amount of three million, five-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and eighty-six cents, and to eight vendors that are manual checks in the amount of eight thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and ten cents, and payroll in the amount of two million, four thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and eighteen cents. So with the addition of claims, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. A motion made in second to approve the consent agenda with the addition of the claims and payroll, made by Vice Mayor Soden, second by Commissioner Herbert. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes five-zero. Thank you. City managers report nothing this evening, huh?
Lundquist.
Yeah, okay, please.
We thought of, Mayor, we just did want to highlight for you all, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board that you all established here this summer has set its first meeting, and Casey is the staff liaison, so I'd like for her to let you know about that first meeting.
The board scheduled that meeting for Wednesday, November fourth, from eleven o'clock to one o'clock here in the City Commission chambers. And the purpose of that meeting will be to have everybody meet each other. Here are presentation from City Attorney Tony Wheeler about the Kansas Open Meetings laws, select a chairperson, and decide what their next irregular meeting schedule will be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing else on city managers report?
Nothing else.
Okay. Okay, we are going to go on to general public comment, and the public obviously is allowed to speak on any items or issues that are not scheduled on the agenda after first being recognized by the mayor. As general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate the items that you bring forward, nor will the commission make decisions on any items presented during this time. Rather, that item will be referred to staff for follow-up. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address, and speakers should address all questions and comments to the commission. Are there any general public comments tonight? I don't know, figuring out how my voice is getting louder, but are there any general public comments this evening? Anyone have anything? Okay. Thank you all. Then we are on to the regular agenda. Now, I know that we are going to have, I think, a number of people speaking this evening. So, again, addressing the commission, the public is allowed to speak on any regular agenda item or give public comment after first being recognized by the mayor. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Again, speakers should address all questions and comments to the commission. I would ask during the general public, or the public comment section of any of the items on the agenda, that we keep our comments to around five minutes, and I will, I will be your monitor, so if I'm up here waving and pointing and be concerned, no, don't be real concerned, but I will, that'll be kind of the cutoff time, and so, anyway, please do that. We want to make sure that we get a hear from everybody, so. Anyway, the first item on the agenda is to consider following items related to KU Central District Plan, and the first is to receive a briefing from University of Kansas officials regarding the KU Central District Plan and Transit Center update. And we are pleased to have Tim Caboni from University of Kansas.
Well, Mr. Mayor and City Commission, I'm Tim Caboni, Vice Chancellor for Public Affairs at the University of Kansas, and it's my pleasure to come visit with you again. You all have been following pretty closely the work that's been going on for the past several years in the Central District at the university, and we're very excited about this project. We think it's a remarkable win both for the University of Kansas and for Lawrence, as well as, as the chancellor has said on multiple occasions, what's good for the University of Kansas is good for Lawrence, and what's good for Lawrence is good for the University of Kansas. So I hope you receive the information tonight and see it as a huge potential win for the city and for the community. So, one of the things I want to start out with is there is an urgent need for this project. If those of you who are familiar with campus may remember Malat Hall, and we have students whose parents and grandparents are in the exact same science facilities and doing labs and experiments as their grandparents have done, and we really need to make some changes. At best, they're outdated, but at their worst, they are obsolete and potentially unsafe. So what we want to make sure we do as an institution is both update those labs, but do it in a way that benefits the entirety of the campus community. We know we've lost a number of faculty recruits because of the shape of those labs, and the facilities are, number one, beyond their usable life, but also, they're beyond renovation for science, and so they have to be replaced. This project is exciting because it's not just science labs, though. It includes living facilities, infrastructure, parking, a reimagined Burge Union, all the things that really are going to be models for twenty-first century science education and general education at the University of Kansas. This will allow us to link the basic sciences with engineering, pharmacy, earth and life sciences, and have folks who live and study and play all in the same space. So the Central District, you'll remember, runs from Iowa Street over to Naismith from fifteenth down to nineteenth, and there's going to be a great deal of work that happens in this area during the next year and a half. Stoffer Place, living facilities will come down, as will a large dormitory on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. For those of you who are interested, it likely will be televised live. And in their place, what we've done is bundled, science facilities, this new union, and living facilities to take advantage of economies of scale. The governor challenged us at the groundbreaking for the School of Business to find ways to build facilities that don't rely exclusively or heavily on state support. And so what we've done during the past four years has been creative and intentional about identifying ways to pool resources, pool projects, and essentially, for the university and for the community, to get a half-billion dollars' worth of new construction while paying about three-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars for those buildings. It requires no state appropriations, there's no risk to the state of Kansas or taxpayers, and we like to say this is the University of Kansas beginning to do work at the speed of business. You know, some challenges with large organizations, that sometimes they are less nimble and less quick, and we think we've gotten both a great deal and an accelerated timeline for these projects. And so, the hope is that if we get Board of Regents approval later this fall, that we will break ground in January, have living facilities completed, some portion of them by fall of seventeen, and then the integrated science buildings, all of the infrastructure, the new parking deck, and the reimagined Burge Union, all unveiled by fall of two thousand and eighteen. So, this isn't walking, this isn't running, this is leaping. One of the great advantages we have is we've waited long enough to replace these facilities, that this will position us among the very best universities in the nation in the way in which they do science. We know that the most interesting and important questions being asked are being asked at the edges of disciplines. And so, having folks who are studying biology and chemistry, working and studying, next to folks who are interested in pharmacy, and business, and law, and engineering, is really going to help move us forward, both in terms of our national prestige, but even more importantly, about attracting investment and funding here to Lawrence, Kansas. You all have been remarkable partners, dear commission, on the Biotechnology Business Center, BTBC, and this is going to allow faculty members and corporations to co-locate in the integrated science buildings and take advantage and leverage that great relationship. I've got pictures, I've got a couple of other things that I want to show you, obviously. You'll remember, we talked a little bit about, a year ago, relocating the Transit Hub, and I'll get to that at the very end, but I just want to walk you through the process we've used. When the chancellor arrived, she began a strategic planning process. We moved into Bold Aspirations, which is the overall plan for the university. In two thousand and twelve, we started looking at our science facilities and then coincided those with a master plan process that really brought us to this place. We've had, for the past year and a half, a set of working groups, all of whom came together really to put this in place. We worked with the legislature, and in the spring and summer, we've moved from proposals to working together and having a company we work with. You'll see here, the November hopefully approval by the Board of Regents, and a description of the facilities, integrated science facilities, our mixed-use gateway, including housing, parking, retail, and a student union, in addition to all the support systems, both for this project and what happens going forward. Again, strategic science facilities, thinking about what are the supports necessary for the expansion of the Central District, and all the other things that we've been doing on campus, in addition to providing modern, up-to-date student living. We know that there are young people that want to have apartment-style living, and this will provide that opportunity for them, in addition to providing reduced or no maintenance costs. One of the ways a public-private partnership functions is you get to negotiate how these work, and what we know is that over the course of the arrangement, that the not-for-profit that will hold these buildings, from whom will lease the properties, that, the constructor or the Edgemore, the group with whom we're working, they'll be responsible for that maintenance and operation. So here are the photographs, and I'll orient you a little bit. Left is west, north, you may remember the parking lot, which is just north of Anshutes, which is the building on the bottom right here. This is a new garage, new support facilities, two integrated science buildings, new union, and eventually, this will become a quad. This is looking to the west from the top of what is the parking garage now. Now, these are not designed buildings, it's just massing structures, so you can see where we're thinking about placing them. Design will come later, and you'll see more detailed schematics as we move through the process. This is from the south, looking to the northeast, I'd say, and again, you see just massing there. And then you see the student housing area to the left, where Stoffer Place used to be. These are apartment complexes, and over here, a new dining facility and additional living spaces. We know that we've increased enrollment, there's increased demand for apartment-style living, and this fits very nicely with where we've been headed in terms of producing new STEM graduates for the state of Kansas, growing the number of engineers that we have on campus, and also is really a way to enhance the overall look and feel of the university. I won't bore you with legal structure around funding, we can certainly answer questions if you want about that, but really, this goes through the process that we have to come with. Right now, us working through final agreements, final design, financial closing, hopefully beginning construction soon, and our target dates. Now, if I can figure out how to work this, I want to bring up for you, uh-oh. There we go. This PDF, no. Am I supposed to go to, I'm supposed to go to the browser and then click on it? There we are. So, for those of you interested in the Transit Hub, you remember, we had had multiple conversations around where it is we might locate that facility. There were, there was one that was proposed on Iowa Street, just a little bit south of nineteenth, and the commission did not approve that spot, but you all did ask us to take a look at where we might put a parking, or, I'm sorry, a Transit Hub within the Central District. After taking a close look at it and all the traffic patterns, folks smarter than I don't think that within the Central District itself is a good place to locate a hub, but they did find a location where we have a need for increased parking that will move that Transit Hub potential location closer to the center of campus. And I've actually already looked at some of the comments online in the Lawrence Journal world, and somebody said, "Well, that's not even near the center of campus." What we know is that over time, the center of campus has moved from Jay-Hog Boulevard to Naismith, and will continue to move as we develop West Campus, essentially placing itself in the Central District. And so, we thought this would be an interesting location for us to begin to explore together. Even more importantly, in addition to the demand that we have for parking, the city's need for Transit Hub, we think there may be federal funding that we can work together to pursue because of the multimodal nature of the project. And so, I'll show you where this, where this is. You'll remember, we talked about around here, this is where the ISBs would be, parking here. Here's Allen Fieldhouse, the New School of Business building right here, and what we're envisioning is parking that would go here. It would not necessarily, it would reduce for a very short period of time parking in that exact spot, but the goal would be for the university to increase parking and for, I think, the city to have a transit point that would be interesting and core to campus. So, we look forward to conversations and cooperating with the city. I think you're going to get a memo later tonight that describes some of this, but we're really excited. It's a great opportunity to partner, and we'll see where it goes.
Okay. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Questions?
You mentioned that you guys are buying these buildings and that you're going to lease them from the, is that going to be an arrangement for the Transit Center, or are we just going to pay outright and just be able to use it?
So, what I've seen is that there may be, it is not part of the P-three arrangement. The number that I saw is there may be as much as eighty percent funding available from the federal government that we'd have to match with a twenty percent investment, and some collaborative effort to do that between the city and the university. And I, I think my hope would be, and our hope would be, that we do that in such a way that didn't require long-term, long-term bonding.
Tim, obviously, partnerships have been great with the University of Kansas, so we're happy to be involved with many of the past projects that we have. Looking forward on this, this is, this is pretty bold, I've got to say that, but one of the things that, you know, obviously, as a member of the governing body, I have to be concerned about is the neighborhoods that we have around the area. Are we going to go, university planning on going through our development process? How does that work? I want to make sure that as we do this, obviously, as somebody who used to live in the nineteen hundred block of Alabama, drainage was a major concern, and the university has been, you know, very involved in slowing that water as it comes south, and with the number of improvements that they have, or we do expect that process to happen, and, you know, can you address some of those things?
Absolutely, and it's good timing. We have received the city's appointments to our joint university neighborhood committee. That's one we've used on multiple occasions to do these projects, not just to solicit input, but really to shape the work that we do together. This is a true partnership, and there has been a lot of consideration given to some of the drainage challenges that used to have, used to occur years ago, and the work the university's done to create holding areas and places for this water runoff to go. Obviously, that will be an important consideration as we move forward on this project, and my hope is, and the hope of the chancellor, is that we have the same kind of strong engagement from the neighborhood, that we want to listen and hear opinions and have them involved in the conversation, and we want to use that to make sure that we get to a solution that's good for the university and good for all the folks that live next door to us. We've always, we want to be good neighbors, and we want to listen, and we want to be good partners, too. There's a date, but I think it's going to have to be moved. We're looking at sometime in November for the initial meeting, at least internally, so we'll get moving pretty quickly.
So, again, going through the process? How do we normally do that?
Mayor, per the joint land use agreement with the city of KU, the university gets together, the Zadok Committee presents to that committee, it's filled with city representatives and neighborhood representatives, and you provide, Tim, accompany some appointments to. And essentially, the university runs meetings, usually a series of meetings, to present the project, receive input. It's very typical that the city representatives will bring back issues to different departments and be that liaison to the, to the committee. I see a lot of input from our stormwater engineer, Matt Bond, Public Works. For the city, it's going to be Public Works and Planning Office and Transit. As I understand, it's sitting on those committees because of the issues of this particular project, which is probably the largest project of its size that we have applied the land use agreement process to. But as a KU project, KU will process that, and we will receive that input. They will receive that input with the chancellor's office, I believe, being kind of the final say in any, any issues through that process.
I think one of the great examples of how this works is the shielding we now have up on the engineering building. There were some real concerns from the neighborhood about the venting units that were up there, and the university installed to the tune of almost a half-million dollars, if I recall correctly, shielding for that, so that the folks that live there on Crescent have something, something to look at that doesn't look like a lunar lander, but is louvered. And so, we, we think this is an important process, it's one we believe in and support and want to, want to work hard to be, to be good neighbors.
Okay, very good. Yeah, please.
The Transit Center that we're going to be partly funding somehow, is that going to go through the standard bid process that we use?
So I don't, right, and so I, I think it's much too early to talk about kind of what that looks like. We haven't even figured out to whom we'd apply, where it'd be located, what does it look like. But I think that one of the things that we want to make sure that we do is that we work hand and glove with you all as investors in the project. And so, we'll figure out how we do that in a way that's sensitive to the needs of the community and the wish of the, of the commission as well.
Did you have a question? So, along with the question of the vice mayor, does that mean that we will have that opportunity if, you know, we would require that those bidding processes do happen? That that is the possibility?
I think that if we're partners on this, and that's something the commission thinks we have to do, I think that we want to do everything in our power to, to work with you to get to, get to good.
Very good. Are we, Tim, are we at a point where we can talk about Edgemore, or the developer, or who all's involved with this?
So, we can talk a little bit about Edgemore. One of the things that's been a part of that process, and one of the concerns that we wanted to address, and I want to make sure I'm explicit about, is that as part of that contract, we are going to expect that many of the subs are local Kansas and Lawrence contractors. This is a half-billion dollars' worth of construction that's going to bring jobs to Lawrence and bring jobs to the community, and that's really important, and it was part of the beginnings of the negotiation as we, as we did this. We don't want lots and lots of folks from outside coming in to do this. We want to take every advantage of, of the talent we have here in our community. Thank you.
Commissioner, do you have something?
Yeah. Tim, appreciate you coming to talk to us. There's a couple of things, stormwater is an old story for, for the neighborhood, and we appreciate you working on it. There's some new twists to this with through streets that haven't been through before, and traffic impacts on the neighborhoods. Especially a concern is the Great School on Ozdale. So, we'll be real interested in working with you on those, and if you have information about what you're anticipating, it'd be good to get it.
Absolutely, happy to provide that. And I know that there are conversations around changing traffic patterns and roads that are going to be widened or narrowed or changed.
Matthew, did you have anything? Okay. That's everything?
That's all I got for right now.
Really?
Look forward, an interesting announcement from the university tomorrow about ten-thirty in the morning, though. I'll tease. Can I do that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Is, Diane, do you have anything?
I believe that Bob Nugent is here, and I don't, Bob, I don't know if there's any additional that you might have to add related to the, to the Transit.
No, not really. Tim speaks well, so he did a pretty good job of speaking for us. Yeah, that, we don't know what your future's going to lie right now, so, so we'll just wait and see how it plays out.
Okay. Was there any public comment on this item this evening? Any member of the public here to speak to this item? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Pam Burkett, and I live at seventeen-twenty Indiana, and the new concerns about the Transit Hub being right at the corner of my neighborhood, I would like to know more about that and the impact, because I am worried about the traffic, and everything that the other neighborhoods said, it's ditto here as well, so just wanted to get my comments in.
Okay, we appreciate that. Is there any other comments this evening? Yes, ma'am.
So, just wanted to get my comments in.
Ma'am, we appreciate that. Is there any other comments this evening? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Anne Cobb, and I live at 1800 Mississippi Street. And this is just an extension of what was just said. I was concerned about where the entry and exit for, you know, into the parking, the new parking facility, and there's a reference in the memo that came to us today about that 18th Street would be rebuilt, and I think that's what you were addressing. Do you have any idea in what way, besides opening up? Because I also, of course, have interest in the amount of traffic that that will increase going right by my house, and I'm sure the other neighborhoods, neighbors feel so. Do you, is, are we at a point where any of that is known?
I think we are so early in this project that, you know, it's too early to tell on that. I think, you know, I believe that this process and the representatives that we have working with the university, I think it's going to be very open, so you're going to have that opportunity to be able to participate in any and all of this. So, I think that that'll be something that's very good, too.
All right, thank you very much.
Other comments this evening?
I'm Jennifer Hansen. I'm also in the 1700 block of Indiana, and I am a little concerned about a transit hub being located over by the rec center. I think the traffic patterns are a concern, and I'm not sure that that's the best location for a hub, given the neighborhood and the location of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, well, thank you all for coming this evening, and we'll see if we can get out as much information as we can. Diane, direction at this point on item A? Any specific direction you need?
I don't think so, Mayor. We'll continue to keep the commission up to date on these things, and related to the transit discussion, as was stated, it's very preliminary at this point, and there's a lot of information for us to gather, and we would certainly be sensitive, I know in conjunction with the university as well, to the needs of the neighborhood related to transit. We've looked at a number of different locations, as you know, and during each one of those, we've tried to be very sensitive and we've understood from the neighbors some of the concerns that they have, so we'll be bringing more to you on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so then the next item is, is to consider authorizing the mayor to execute engineering services agreement with PEC for the completion of field check plans, 19th Street from Naismith Drive to Iowa Street, the amount of $166,000, which will be equally split $83,000 each between the University of Kansas and the City of Lawrence.
The central district plan is an exciting project. It's a large project and it's definitely going to have an effect on 19th Street. 19th Street is one of the projects that we have identified in our infrastructure sales tax plan. It's identified to be rebuilt between Iowa and Naismith in 2019. The central district plan will be over and done with by then, and we want to try and get ahead of that a little bit. The proposed improvements that we're wanting to talk about will include center turn lane, one lane in each direction, probably intersection improvements at Osdale, possibly Stewart. We don't know how that's going to affect the emergency services with the fire department there, sidewalks, bike lanes. So, with the central development plan proceeding, both the city and KU agree that coordinating and planning for the 19th Street improvements is important. The city has infrastructure, utility infrastructure as well, city water mains and other utilities, there's electric lines, there's telephone lines and everything else out there. We want to make sure that as the central district plan develops and gets constructed and utilities gets moved, we don't have to move them twice. We don't want to have our water line or the gas company or Westo move their lines, and then we say, oh, we're going to build our street over top of it. You need to move again, so we don't want to do that. Street grades, driveway locations, sidewalks, storm sewers need to be sized, horizontal and vertical alignment, all this stuff needs to be figured out. And finally, we just need to make sure that we have enough right of way. We want to make sure that if we need an easement for our utilities or pedestrian easement or additional right of way, I think the expansion, and we haven't looked into this a whole lot, but I think it's going to have to go to the north side, which is KU's property, which affects how they lay their stuff out. PEC, Professional Engineering Consultants, is the site and infrastructure engineer for the central district project. They've completed about 90% of the survey that will be needed for 19th Street with the central district project. They're just working on that. They're also doing the traffic study that the city's required of KU. They're also working with their stormwater engineer and doing their storm sewer design and analysis that's going to tie directly into 19th Street. They are most familiar with the project and how it will tie into 19th and the improvements that may or will be needed at Osdale and Stewart Avenue. PEC is one of the qualified firms that we've typically used on other projects as well, both Public Works and utilities has used PEC. They're familiar with our requirements and our standards, and that's why we're recommending to go ahead and hire them to do the field check plans for this project. Employing PEC at this point will ensure that the coordination of both projects, including grading, right of way, easements, elevations, horizontal alignment. So, the scope at this time does not include the utilities. When we first talked to them, there was some other discussions with utilities, but we want to include that at some point. So, we've asked PEC to give us an addendum or an update, an additional contract for the utility or for the water line as well. That's being negotiated now. Utility Department's working with PEC to develop that scope. So, tonight, all we're asking for is authorization to proceed with the field check plans. And the field check plans are not buildable. We can't go out, I know this is a lot of money, but we can't go out and start building off these field check plans. There will still be a lot of final design, right of way plans and other things, but at least we'll have the footprint and we'll have that, all the improvements coordinated. So, presented this evening for the city commission's consideration is to approve the mayor to sign the agreement with PEC to provide engineering services to develop the field check plans for 19th Street from approximately Naismith to Iowa in the amount of $166,000. KU feels that this is important as well, and they're willing to pay, partner with us and share that cost 50/50, so our share would be $83,000. And I can answer questions.
Questions, Mr. Chair?
We did not reconstruct the intersection of Iowa and 19th Street when we did the Iowa work recently.
No, we haven't.
Are we going to qualify for some money from the state for that work?
We could. Just depends on, I mean, Iowa Street is still on the state system. It's usually a competitive process. That is a possibility.
Okay, so if we go and spend this money now, are we going to be able to get some of it back from them when we work on that intersection? Or how do we get that money?
At Iowa Street?
Iowa and 19th. That intersection is tough.
Yeah, this project would go from that intersection, so from the...
I thought it was from Constance.
Well, we're asking them to go across the street with the survey to make sure things do tie in. At this point, we don't have a state project that's identified to make those improvements on Iowa Street.
I'm sorry, when I saw the constant to Naismith, I thought that that intersection would be included in this work.
They're going to look at it, but there won't be, that won't be reconstructed as part of this project.
Other questions? So, they're going to, they're going to look across the street, look across Iowa?
It's more for coordination to make sure that if we need additional turning lanes, I mean, we're only doing field check plans, so we're not getting final design. 19th Street, if we're going to need additional lanes there as you're coming off of Iowa Street, that enters into that and grading to make sure that ties in. Right now, we don't have a construction project at 19th and Iowa. Now, just because we develop plans, if we decide to go ahead and further, you know, do another project there, doesn't, disqualifies from asking KDOT for construction funding.
Wouldn't that be a good idea to start that?
We can take a look at that. We can take a look at that.
It seemed to me that that intersection's an awfully important part of making this work, and, I mean, it's part of the state highway system at that point. And they asked us to leave it out from the work that we did on Iowa Street, as I recall.
When we, Millen overlaid it?
Right.
Yeah, that was for accessibility issues, to get the sidewalks and stuff, and that's why we had to leave it out. But we can definitely, we can add that, definitely look at that.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay.
That'd be good. Okay. In a normal process, when we're looking at an engineering firm, we would send a RFP or RFQ for a firm. We would go through that process. You would bring recommendation back once we received those consultants coming forward, engineering consultants. Obviously, in this particular case, we have a situation where PEC, as you said, very qualified consulting engineering firm, who has been doing all the work in the area, you know, knows everything that's there, it is your recommendation, rather than going through that process when we have a company that's a consultant that's already done that, it's your recommendation that we would use them and that the negotiated price is fair and figures into the normal pricing factors, I guess?
That is correct. Typically, we would go through an RFP process, but because of all the reasons that I listed, PEC would have been the, would have been the chosen firm. It makes sense, they're very familiar, and as Mr. Caboni mentioned, this is kind of an accelerated project. We need to catch up, and PEC is about the only firm that has the information to make this happen.
Did you anticipate the utility work being part of this $166,000 in the beginning?
You know, when we started talking about, we started talking about street, we knew the utilities had some water lines that they were going to do. In fact, they're actually doing the Osdale, they're going ahead and replacing the line on Osdale from 23rd to 19th, and they're upsizing that. We briefly discussed it, but we're not included in this scope. So, we need to, we need to come back with an amendment. It can be separate from this with PEC, and Mike Lawless is working with, Mike, I think he's contacted you, I hope, to talk about that scope.
Okay. All I was thinking was, we didn't think we were getting the utility part, and then it was pulled out at the last minute. It wasn't included in...
It was not included in the $166,000.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I noticed in the field checklist you've got on here, design the complete street features for sidewalks, both the north and south, as well as the bike lanes on the north and south side. Does that mean they're going to actually be in the final design product, or is it just checking to see if it's going to be feasible?
That will be what we're anticipating, the final design. Now, I'm not sure, we'll have to talk with KU whether we end up with a multi-use path on that north side or a six-foot sidewalk. Right now, we've got a six-foot sidewalk in here, but those are minor adjustments that can be made.
Okay, it'd be nice to see them on both sides, if you can.
Oh, sidewalk will be on both sides, definitely.
Okay, great. The other thing is, what's the final product we get from this? Is it a report? Is it a design to...
It'll be preliminary plans, field check plans, you know, there'll be the 24 by 36 inch sheets that we'll go through and we'll walk the site, make sure we don't have any things that we've missed. The next step from there would be, you know, just finishing up the plan, it'd be final design, office check plan, it would be all the details and stuff. But we will get a preliminary, what we'll call preliminary set of plans. I mean, it'll be 50% complete.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Anything else, Chair?
Do we have any ideas? As I'm going through the, in the report they gave us, the supplemental services go on for two full pages there. Do we have any idea of where we're going to be at cost-wise? I mean, I know that we've thrown out this initial number, but as I look at the additional services, a lot of this stuff seems to be logical to include in a package like this, and I wonder where we're going to end, you know, for instance, they're upcharging for design of street lighting, design of, you know, traffic signal systems. There seems to be a lot of things in here that potentially become incorporated in this project, but not initially incorporated in the cost. I'm just trying to project where our ceiling's at before we end up with change order or something like that.
Well, that would, all the supplemental stuff that is listed, that would typically be in the final design. And like I said, it's about a 50% check, so you're probably about twice that. We're hoping to be a little bit less because you get all the survey out of the way, you get a lot of the right of way issues and stuff like that out of the way, but you're probably at about half at field check. And that's not uncommon or under standard. We just usually come to the commission with, here's the whole package, it'd be...
Right. That's, yeah, that's...
$280,000 or $300,000. We're only going 50% right now.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, thanks, Chair. Diane, did you have anything additional on this?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Is any public comment on this item? Tim, did you have any, do you have anything additional on this item? Okay. Okay. If there's no public comment on this item, we'll bring it back to the commission. $166,000 divided by two is $83,000 each field check. We do want to go ahead, talk about adding the intersection to the state highway for consideration of improvements there, help for improvements there. Anything we want to, else we want to ask for? Okay. Well, if not, I think it's, I think we've got a, you know, good consulting firm. I appreciate the fact that Vice Mayor and I did have discussions with staff yesterday about, you know, bidding process and make sure at any time that we go through our normal bidding process, we understand the importance, you know, in this particular case, of being able to use PEC with the amount of work that they've already done in the central district. So, I think it's probably somewhere along the line, it saves us a little bit of money of not having to go back and redo the work again. So, I think it's probably a smart move to go ahead and participate in this with the University of Kansas, probably get, you know, the best information that we can at this time. So, anyway, any other questions or comments? Okay. And I would entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an engineering services agreement with PEC for the completion of field check plans for 19th Street from Naismith Drive to Iowa Street. The cost will be $166,000 and split $83,000 each between University of Kansas and City of Lawrence, and also with the addition of the Iowa Street intersection and that change. And that's not part of this contract, but understand it's an important part of the deal for us. Anyway, I'd entertain that motion.
So, moved?
Second.
Motion made in second to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and pay according to the split, as for made by Commissioner Herbert, second by Commissioner Larson, all in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes 5-0. Again, thank you all very much for the presentation. Thank everyone for their comments this evening. Okay. Next items are, consider the following items related to Albemarle. Sandy, are we going to look at these one at a time, or is the presentation that you're about to make going to be all-inclusive?
All, I'm sorry, all-inclusive.
Okay. Okay, so, we have considered approving rezoning of approximately 51.85 acres from RS7, which is single dwelling residential district, RM12, multi-dwelling residential district, and PUD, Albemarle Plan Dated Development District, to RM24, PD Overlay, multi-dwelling residential plan development overlay district, including property located at 1800, 1809, and 2021 Crossgate Drive. And you want me to go ahead and explain the other items, too, while we're here?
It's up to you. I'm going to touch on those.
Okay, I think we will go ahead and, I think we'll go ahead and discuss them at the same time. And the second then is to, the presentation is going to cover them all, right?
Yes.
Okay. The second one then is to consider approving a special use permit for inactive recreation uses in the Albemarle Plan Development, 1800 and 1809, Crossgate Drive, Proposed Lots 1 and 3, including tennis courts, swimming pools, and accessory structures to community recreation uses. And then the last item is to consider approving a preliminary development plan for Albemarle, containing approximately 50 acres and located at 1809 Crossgate Drive. The plan proposes the construction of a new entrance road from Bob Billings Parkway, multi-dwelling structures containing 292 dwelling units, active and passive recreation units, including new clubhouse... active and passive recreation units, including new clubhouse and event center, and the other part has been removed, okay. So, that kind of lays out the zoning, the special use permit, and the preliminary development plan. Ms. Andrew?
To start, my name is Sandy Day, I'm one of your staff planners, and the items, as the mayor has described, are three parts to an overall development project that we are looking at in the Albemarle area. The first piece of this project is the rezoning, and with rezoning, when a planned development is proposed, it is required to be submitted concurrently with a planned development. So we're seeing the base zoning of the multifamily, the RM district, with the PD overlay, and that brings us to having a development plan for your consideration this evening. And then one of the uses, the active recreation use, is a use that's allowed in the RM district, subject to a special use permit, so that's where we pick up that third item. The overall project covers roughly fifty-one acres, there are four lots, a preliminary development plan also functions as a preliminary plat, so we are looking at some of the basic building blocks for development through the subdivision process, that includes easements, rights of way, lot configuration. And then, I just, again, would like to point out, the zoning and the development plan apply to the entire project, the special use permit applies really predominantly to lot three at this point in time. This slide is intended to give you an overall view of where this project lives within the existing development pattern of the Albemarle area. Albemarle was an original planned development, similar to having base zoning district with an overlay, was started in the mid nineteen-sixties, it included property that was both in the city limits at the time and in the county. It's been developed through a number of different processes, including subdivision plats, site plans, development plans, pretty much every process that we've had is how that area has developed. This project gives us an opportunity to establish a baseline and to move forward with what the development intent and expectation is for the balance of the property that we're talking about, outlined in the orange on this slide. This just gives you a little idea of what property is platted and unplatted within this area. There are some platted properties, and we do resolve some of those plating issues through this process as the property moves through future phases, including final plats and final development plans later down the line. Large portion of the Albemarle golf course is unplatted today, and this will establish lot boundaries within that area. Some of the key issues that we looked at for the project included just understanding the land uses that were in this project, how access was going to be provided throughout the development, and what the future development expectations are. Preliminary development plans are just that, they are preliminary. There is an expectation that a final development plan would come forward for either individual lots, or in the case of the multifamily, it could potentially come forward as a phase A and a phase B, depending on the scope of the applicant, applicant's initial phases as we move through there. We talked about the zoning, which prescribes a specific density. This project, the residential uses right now are only proposed on lot two. The proposed density is really much lower than what would be allowed at that base district. That density, the housing type, the units, those are all controlled through the development plan process. The development plan also does allow some commercial uses, and we'll see that in lot number three of the development plan. These commercial uses include the banquet facility, the hotel rooms, the fitness center, and there's some office uses associated with the operation of all of these amenities to this project. Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval of this project to use, so that is their recommendation. It did follow staff's recommendation for approval. There are some very basic use restrictions that were included in the zoning. Those are reflected in the ordinance that you have on your agenda tonight as well. The preliminary development plan, and I'm taking these just a little bit out of order, the preliminary development plan, again, covers that entire project for lots. The most detail that we have today of those four lots is for lot two, which is the proposed multifamily, lot three, which is where all of the amenities, the active recreation and the commercial uses would be located. Where we came to that maximum residential unit really goes back to a calculation of the area times the maximum density allowed, and we're using this slide to really show that the proposed request is much less dense than could potentially be allowed. One of the elements of this project has been access and discussing how access was going to be provided for this new development. Access is fairly restricted to this area because of the existing development pattern. What this slide shows you are the three segments of Crossgate Drive that will be going from the south at Clinton Parkway up to the north, that is Bob Billings Parkway. Starting on the right here, Crossgate Drive is an existing street, it ends in a cul-de-sac. This project would extend that right-of-way with a large cul-de-sac that would provide access to lots one, two, three, and four. And then from there, that access would extend as a private street within the development and access easement. And that gives the applicant an opportunity to build on some setbacks and arrange buildings a little bit differently than if we had conventional street right-of-way through the middle of this. They're also proposing on-street parking on this private street in the interior of the development. It would end at a cul-de-sac, a nude cul-de-sac, that would provide a connection to that existing development that's up there, kind of to the northeast, and with a new street segment that it would further extend north to Bob Billings Parkway. And it is this street that was a significant discussion item, both for the residents and for the planning commission, and being able to provide a good access option to this property without trying to weave through, especially at that north end. It's a very narrow piece of access easement through there, and trying to build this additional traffic accommodation in here just really was not terribly feasible to go that other direction. As I mentioned, the preliminary development plan shows us the four lots that we talked about. There are no proposed changes to lot one, that's where the existing clubhouse banquet facility is today. That will remain for the early phases of the development of this project. Phase two, or I'm sorry, lot two, is where the new multifamily residential uses would be located. Lot three, the activity centers. Lot four, when this project had originally come in, had been proposed as an assisted living facility. That project was removed from the applicant request just before planning commission, so it is a blank lot. Because it is a blank lot, any future development of that lot would require a new preliminary development plan that would go to the planning commission and back to this body before development of that lot could commence.
Sandy, excuse me, there's absolutely no action that this body is being asked to take on lot four this evening?
Other than to prove it as a lot in the zone.
Okay, got it.
Lot two, this was a piece of the discussion, this area of the project has always had the more intense residential uses, the project includes two hundred and forty-two residential units. It includes appropriate parking spread throughout that lot, and then, as I mentioned, it also includes this on-street parking that provides kind of overflow parking when Albemarle is having events within the active area of the project, provides more organization to parking than exists currently. So this is really considered to be an improvement to the existing operation of the facility today. The residential piece includes multiple buildings. There are two-story buildings, and we did have to orient the slide a little bit different, so this gets us that north end. This is where that transition is occurring to that existing development. These buildings are smaller and maximum two-story height. As we move to the central portion of the project, we have three and four-story buildings where the applicant is looking to take advantage of the topography of that property, so parts of the building are gonna look four stories on the backside. I believe buildings D and E here are proposed as four-story buildings within the intensive portion of this project. Couple quick elevations of what the buildings are looking like at this point in time. We will continue to refine these elevations as we move through the final development plan. Part of the final development plan will include final elevations that get recorded, and that will be the expectation of development for the project. The three, four-story elevation, so you can see three on one side, four on the other. Lot three is another portion of this project that has a lot of activity associated with it. This is where the amenities to the Albemarle development would be located. This is seen as serving not only this development, but the wider Albemarle neighborhood. It includes a number of non-residential uses that fall into the commercial categories. As a planned development, planned developments are allowed to encompass or include certain amounts of commercial development to serve that project. This is within that scope. We did have a lot of discussion about the guest rooms, that does fall within the development code as a hotel use. It is restricted in the zoning and through the development plan to a specific number of guest rooms, so we're not looking at a large conference facility, if you will, in this particular project. The active recreation uses, excuse me, tennis courts, swimming pools, those kinds of elements fall under the special use permit, so that's an additional layer to this project. And those uses are generally considered to be compatible or appropriate in a particular zoning district, subject to special use or special approval. The development plan really provides the vehicle to be able to assess the details, the screening sidewalk, the architecture of those improvements as we move forward to those additional phases of this project. There were a number of conditions associated with that preliminary development plan, some that apply generally to the development plan, some that apply specific to lot two and to the subdivisions. So I do have slides of those, I can go over those conditions if you have specific questions. We'll tell you that Planning Commission did recommend approval of the planned development, so unanimous approval, so we were quite excited to get to that level of confidence at the Planning Commission. I'm gonna skip the conditions for just a moment. Touch on the special use permit, this affects only lot three, and it, at this point, it is really just that active recreation use, the outdoor swimming pools that are included in that particular element at this point in time. The applicant were to come forward with other changes, then we would address that through revision to the special use permit and/or to the development plan as that were to move forward. When more detail is known about lot one, we will identify the appropriate procedure for addressing any changes to that project, to that lot. We did just kind of go through the applicant's list of proposed uses, making sure that we are identifying them within the code, whether they were passive or active recreation, whether they fell into a cultural center, whether the transient accommodation or the hotel use. This was an exercise, staff went through with the applicant early on, identifying those uses, making sure that we had clear code authority within the various districts and lots that we were looking at through the development plan. Just highlighting that the active recreation use is a permitted use in the RM twenty-four zoning district. Again, the special use permit was forwarded to you with a recommendation for approval, and there were no conditions with the special use permit, so it was really very clean, and that is because we know that we will be looking at this project again through a final development plan. One of the conditions that the Planning Commission adopted, because this was such a public process and there was so much engagement from the neighborhood, rather than a final development plan being approved administratively, the recommendation was to take that final development plan, its future application, back to the Planning Commission that requires notice, that requires Planning Commission action, rather than just administratively being approved by staff. And I'm, that concludes my comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
And again, as was brought up yesterday, it will not come back, the final development plan will not come back to the Lawrence City Commission, correct?
Correct.
That final decision rests with the Planning Commission.
Yes, and that's under the code prior to two thousand and six, that would have been the process.
Okay, so, at this point, before we start with questioning and stuff, ex parte con, yeah, I should have guessed, there we go. Randy?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, Randy Larkin, Senior Assistant City Attorney. This is a rezoning matter, special use permit. As such, you sit in a quasi-judicial capacity, which basically means you're gonna hear the evidence, apply the law, the rules of the city code, make a decision. When you sit in that capacity, then certain due process rights attach, and one of those is that you disclose any information you may have received from a third party outside the city, so that all the commissioners have the same information from which to make a decision, and so that any proponent or opponent of the project has the right to either rebut it or come back and state it. So, basically, if you had any communications with any third party outside the city regarding this issue, you should disclose who you talked to and the subject of what you spoke about. If it's already in the record, it would be sufficient to say that there's nothing outside of the record that you talked about. So if you have any questions?
Okay, any questions? Vice Mayor, you had any ex parte?
No, I was looking, sir, I think I got an email yesterday, but I think it was sent to all of us, I was gonna verify.
Okay. And the same, I have received probably several emails over the course of this that I believe had been addressed to everyone, and I think that we all would have that information. You know, the concern I would have is that four members of this body may have a little bit more of the email contact prior to Commissioner Larson being seated, and I don't, I don't know what effect that that would have. I'm just thinking kind of outside there a little bit.
Are there, I do not know if there are any, do you have, are there email communications that Commissioner Larson has not received that the rest of the commission has? Yeah, no, no.
I don't know what that would be, because, you know, I know that we've received them, but it would be information that the four of us may have that she may not have been privy to. And without taking a couple hours and going through and digging through this thing, I couldn't tell what.
Was there anything in any, do you recall any information from any of those emails that is not in the record now that you're aware of?
I believe all of it's in the record, yes.
Yeah, that's, and she has received that information, it's in the packet, and so you don't have any more information than what she has.
Well, I figured I would bring it up at this time if there would be a question. Mr. Herbert?
I, I received a handwritten letter from the president of the Woodfield Meadows Homeowners Association, I think that's correct, off of Crossgate Drive, and it was, it was not specific to this project, but more of just a general, that the neighbors are upset at the volume of traffic coming up a private street.
Okay, finish vote.
I got an email from David Lerner on August twenty-sixth, and I forwarded it on to the interim city manager because it was an inquiry more than a, this is my opinion, and I think, I think Diane took care of that. That's, that's the only thing I've got, it's out of the record.
Commissioner Larson, got anything we need to know about?
I've spoke to a few of the neighbors based on the letters that they had written, and so no new information off of those, no.
Okay, and I'm sure it's the same information that we've all probably received over the course of this.
Yeah, just clarification on the letters is all I ask for, that's it.
Thank you. Sandy, are there any questions of Sandy at this time on staff presentation? That's no?
I better ask it, 'cause I'm sure it's not for Sandy.
Well, just in case.
I just wanted to double-check that the infrastructure that was putting in, the developer was arranging that and paying for that, any changes or upgrades to it, like the water lines and the roads. That's why I was like, I was pretty sure it's not for, not for her, but it's a road out there.
Vice Mayor, can you answer that, yeah, any, any development-related infrastructure improvements, which there will be some in terms of sewer and water and private utilities, and even, I believe there's a turn lane in Bob Billings Parkway that we didn't get into a lot of the detail, but as that new street hits Bob Billings Parkway, any of the demands that the development brings to the infrastructure will be paid for by the developer.
That could include anything from benefit district financing, you know, could be asked for, but the... be asked for, but the, those final decisions wrestle this body, correct?
It could be. It, it, there are no requests on the table, as, as I understand it with this.
Okay. Do you have any questions with staff?
Yeah. How wide, how wide are the streets? I mean, we're talking three different segments of the streets.
Crossgate as a public street would be a minimum of 60 feet wide, so the two segments that are at the north and the south end should be a minimum of 60. They may need to be a little bit wider, especially at Bob Billings Parkway. At that north end, we will finish reviewing that particular final width as we move through a final plat. The interior segment, they are proposing a 30-foot-wide access utility easement. That's not terribly unusual. Usually you have a utility easement, sometimes you have a parallel, I'm sorry, 30-foot utility access easement with a parallel just utility easement to accommodate the road width, typically 27 feet, sidewalks, utilities that would be going through that particular piece.
The right-of-way, and so then the pavement and the sidewalks and utilities go within that right-of-way.
Okay. Good. So, is that street always going to be a private street? Is that how that works?
That would be the expectation.
Yeah, and what, what the development gets for that being a private street is, they get the benefit of closer setbacks for the buildings and the ability to put parking on the street. The city then doesn't maintain it, so that's a benefit to the city. They are, private streets are required to be built to city standards in terms of its depth and materials and width and those sorts of elements, because they still act as streets. And if in the future it's requested of, of the developer to dedicate it to the city, then we know it's built to city standards.
Okay, but they don't have the existing easements that would gone with a private street?
We would, we would need to capture those in some force, some fashion in the future.
We would receive those through a plating process or part of this development plan?
In the future, as a dedication, yeah, any, any, any utilities we, we need today are by easement on the plat that Sandy's presenting to you. Correct.
In all of this, the discussion, you know, if approved, this, this future road or future crossgate or whatever it is, to the north, tell me that, what would be the, you know, the anticipated sequence of when this new road's built? And one of the reasons that I bring that up is at the far west end of Bob Billings Parkway and the discussions, you know, that the commission has had as to, you know, the amount of traffic that's going through the neighborhood, especially the large truck traffic, that construction truck traffic. Would the street required to be built first?
One of the conditions of approval is that the developer present a plan for construction and for phasing and, and how we get contractors up to the, to the facility. That's one of the reasons we, we advocated for going to the Planning Commission with this and not just administrative, because that was one of the bigger concerns of the, of the neighbors' input through the process. So, conceptually, there would be a construction road built to do the construction, and also the, the requirement of the street being finalized by the time even phase one is occupied by occupants. So that's, that's in concept form today. Some details need to be worked out, and even constructing the road to get to the, to the main thing is going to take a little bit of traffic through, through one of the ways in through Crossgate today. So, it's going to take some thought, it's going to take a little bit of process and quite a bit of public input, I would say.
So do we have the condition in place, are the conditions sufficient to cover, as I read, to make sure that, that that happens, so it's understood that that is the process?
Condition J, one J of the preliminary development plan speaks to a phasing plan that shall address construction routes to the development areas, and that, I believe, would be one of the primary plans presented to the Planning Commission with the final development plan before any permits are ever granted for the, for the development. And we have very clear understanding about what that construction route looks like and the phasing of it.
Okay, so, as long as that covers it, you know, and.
We don't have the answers of the details today. What we have is a condition setting up the framework to get those answers, make them public, go through a public process with it before any permit is issued.
Okay, so with, with that condition that is on, on that, on staff's recommendation there and the Planning Commission recommendation, that is sufficient to cover before anything can happen in the process, still has to continue, that review and final, final parking and all that plan has to be in place?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just checking.
And Mr. Warner may have more information to share tonight from, from the Planning Commission on some thoughts about that.
Okay. So, any other questions with staff at this time?
I got one, just one. On the road, the new road that, that's going to be built, are they, how are they going to deal with all that drainage, drainage issue that runs through there?
It'll, it'll need to be engineered, obviously, to, to take into account all of those. It's not going to be a, a cheap road, I think Paul would attest to, that it's going to take some, some cost to, to deal exactly with that issue, which is the drainage issue. So, it, it will be engineered to, to, to address all of those. Matt Bond has already been working with Mr. Warner's office on, on some of those concepts, so, yeah, it's a big part of it.
Okay, and that all has to be approved by the city before they can proceed with that?
Correct. That will be a public street, designed through all the city's engineering design standards.
Okay.
Okay. Scott, one other, Sandy, one other question that deals with the stormwater engineer's condition. Is there going to be a drainage study that is blanket over all of this, and then there'll be a stormwater plan for each of the final development plans?
I, I think, yeah, we understand that there are some revisions to water features outside the scope of this project that are on the golf course itself. So, the city will, will be looking at those as well as the impact of the, of the development, the parking lots, the buildings, the drives on stormwater, and it's all has to work together. So, we are, I think, very much in tune with, with those, addressing those issues out there.
Okay, so we're, we're going to have the one big plan, and that as changes or final pieces of the final development plan come forward, there'll be another requirement from the stormwater engineer that a, that a new study has to be done, or whatever happens, a new plan has to be done.
Right. Yeah, I think they'll, I think they'll work closer to coordination than, than step-by-step, at least for the lots one and three and four, as the, for the apartments and the main kind of commercial facility. So, again, Paul may have some updates to that timing of that.
Okay. Okay, any other questions with staff?
But none of the, the permits that are going to be required after this vote tonight has, comes back to the commission. Everything is done through your office.
On the apartment lot and the golf course lot, that's true. It will go back through the Planning Commission. You will see the other two lots that don't have development proposed through the preliminary development plan process at a later date.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? The applicant?
Do you want to tell them?
No, just a guess. Good evening, Paul Warner, Paul Warner Architects. It's great to finally get to talk about Alvamar. I think we've been working on this almost for a year now. Sandy did a great job walking you through all the steps, and so she, she had way more slides than I've got. I've got, I guess, one, what I like to call a prettier picture. It's a huge file, so we'll, we'll work on that. What, before you is really a plan to save Alvamar. Our plan will allow Alvamar to continue as a viable operation. What's a little unique about this, it's not just a land use problem or item in front of you guys. It, it really is about buying a business. I mean, Alvamar is a business. What we're looking at are our ideas and concepts and plans to, to let Alvamar continue. We, we just can't go out and convince a thousand people to spend 500 bucks a month and take up golf. We just can't generate that many golfers. So it's about a variety of activities. As Sandy mentioned, you know, active recreation things, pools, fitness center, new banquet facility. Obviously, golf is, is a major item here, but it's about all those other activities that we see, you know, breathing a little, a new life into. It's a schematic plan, which, as Sandy mentioned, the plan she showed you had a little bit more details, but I like to, to use this as the overall big picture. So, right where the public clubhouse is and the private clubhouse, if hopefully everybody's familiar with, that's really where we concentrated everything, the pools, the fitness center, banquet facility, new pond, new 18 green, new nine green, to keep all that activity right in the center of Alvamar, really right where it is right now. From that center portion going north and south, the residential expands out. We tried to step it down. Sandy mentioned, we put two-story buildings on the furthest north portion of that first lot two that we're looking at, you know, to at least, obviously, be respectful for the other residences that are there. But it, it really is about getting more people up here and more uses and more activity to just keep Alvamar as a viable operation. The biggest thing that you guys have already obviously touched on is the new crossgate, the new road going around the north. I think it was our idea, so we'd like to take a little credit for it. Commissioner Larson, you already, you know, mentioned it, it certainly is not an easy road to build. A huge drainage channel goes through there. It's going to require, obviously, a, a lot of engineering, a lot of work with Matt Bond. By building a box for that creek, they'll actually help with the elevation to raise the street up, but I think we, we've priced that street at, at least a million and a half dollars. So, I know this isn't all about money, but that comes in a little bit when we talk about the timing of that road. But we think by far, it's one of the best ideas about taking some time and looking at this development to really fix that street. I mean, Crossgate, south of Bob Billings Parkway, has got to be about the most unique street we, we have going on in the city, and, and we didn't do it. So I'd like to think, you know, maybe, maybe we'll get a little credit for, for trying to fix it. The other thing this, this drawing shows in this area are, and again, very schematic, and on the far side are ponds. The one abandoned Florence Country Club house over Alvamar is 10 years ago, they renovated the club and they built irrigation ponds so they can minimize the amount of water they have to buy from the city, which makes some of the city people happy, and certainly makes the members happy. And, and right now, Alvamar, the irrigation system's obviously very dated, it's old, but they don't have the ponds, they, they don't have the ability to generate enough water to use that to irrigate the course. With all this development on top of the hill and kind of feeding to both sides, we see the ability to build ponds on both courses to irrigate the entire thing, and obviously helps with stormwater. This is 350 acres of mostly grass, so I'd like to think, you know, stormwater actually isn't our problem here. It really is about collecting it and being able to use the water to irrigate the course. I can talk a lot about all this, I can answer questions. I mean, in short, we, we, we did go through Planning Commission twice. We came here with a 9-0 unanimous vote. As we mentioned, the neighbors, we, we tried to have several meetings met with the shareholders, the members, the surrounding neighbors. Our whole's going to change, absolutely. You know, are, are the views of some of the residents going to change? It, it will. And, you know, as, as we asked, is, is the traffic going to increase? You know, we really hope so. We, we need it to, and we like to think the new, the new Crossgate Street will really, really help handle that. That street is about timing. As Scott mentioned, the biggest, you know, one of the biggest hurdles is going to get construction traffic in there. Our dilemma is, a little bit, I just don't want to necessarily have to build that street brand-new first before we ever start building other things. So, I, I agree with Scott's assessment. I think there's going to be some point, and I would say if, if everything that we showed on lot two and everything that was on lot three was built, I think it would, we would all agree that that street would have to be in, operational, you know, accepted by the city and functioning. I think there's a line in there somewhere where the existing streets can work. It's probably more about getting the construction traffic in and out every day. And so that may be where we've talked about, you know, starting on that road and whether that's the subbase or however we want to call it, but that we would start and use a construction access as much as we can. And, because I, I, I know what's happened now further west, and, and we don't want any part of that. And we know, we're smart enough to know that Crossgate south of Bob Billings Parkway is not a good way to bring construction traffic in. So it's a, it's, it's a plan about figuring out access for the construction traffic and where's the line between that road needing to be done when these other items are finished and, and ready to be used. So, we know we got to do that, we know we got to go through the phasing plan, and when we bring the final development plan forward, we plan on having that detail. You know, I could talk for a couple hours, or I can just answer questions or come back up after some of the public speak.
Two things. Understand, and I appreciate you bringing up what is the new Crossgate, and, and understand our concern about making sure that access for the construction has got to come through some, some makeup, I think, of that new roadway.
I'd agree.
I mean, there, there's no other way around.
I'd, I'd agree.
You know, figure out a way to bring it back to us if we, if we got to look at it that way, because I think, you know, we're the one that gets called.
I'm open to other ideas too. South, Crossgate south of Bob Billings does not work.
Well, it's, it, it's one of those.
It doesn't work today, yes.
I, I think we learned a lot about, you know, access to the west end of Bob Billings, so we will track that and, and make sure, you know, Scott, figure out the line that Mr. Warner's brought up, because I believe it's an absolute, some form of that roadway and the access where construction has to be on that new road. It's just got to be. So, figure that out.
Fair enough.
Now, one of the things that we haven't talked about, the, the access on, on the current Crossgate Road North, and how's that going to be handled? Obviously, that street is going to remain there. Is that going to be shut down? Is it going to be gated? What is our suggestion?
Paul Davis is here and a couple of those owners, so it's probably fair for them to answer in detail. If my preference, if, if, if I lived there, I would access, I would use our new street to the cul-de-sac. I'd put gates up there, and I would put an emergency gate for fire department access only on Bob Billings into that street now. And so, I mean, you're essentially going from a really, really bad situation to a pretty great situation. I mean, a private little neighborhood with a private street and nobody driving down that street at all unless, really, unless really they live there. But it's really up to them. Everything we have worked out with Paul Davis and, and his clients are, we'll build the new street, we're going to build a cul-de-sac. You know, the rest is whatever you guys feel like doing is, is up to you, and the city, obviously, and, and the fire department. But I think that's what, where fire would land.
Okay. So I sat in a little bit then. Questions of the applicant?
The building heights that, the two, three, and four stories, do you, do you know what the maximum building heights would be on any of those buildings?
Well, the maximum building height by code's 45 feet.
45 feet?
Which really is four stories. And as Sandy has mentioned, I mean, one of those buildings is flat, four stories. Most of them, the, the hill falls off pretty far to the west, so viewing that from, let's call it, what existing Crossgate is really a three-story building when you get to the downside, it's a.
So you'll take advantage of the topography?
So we're trying to take advantage of the topography, but we're, we're limited by 45 feet, which is really, really four stories max.
Okay. Okay. And on that construction road issue, I don't mean to beat a dead horse here, but you're telling us that there will be no construction traffic on the neighborhood streets. Is that correct?
I'm sorry.
On the neighborhood streets?
I would, I think crossgate north of Clinton Parkway for a while, I mean, it's a public street. I think some construction traffic would use that. I don't think any construction traffic can really even navigate coming off Bob Billings Parkway. Is some guy in a pickup truck going to drive down there? You know, I've already talked with a neighbor tonight about how we can block that off or deal with that. But I think the reality is if we have a really good construction access road, for lack of a better word, into the site, I think we can encourage them to use that. I think, you know, further out west, I mean, there was probably, and I didn't deal with all that, but I heard some of it. I mean, part of the problem was the access road into the site wasn't built or was being built or, you know, it wasn't built enough that some of the construction workers couldn't use it. So I think it's about what we said earlier. It's about a good access plan into the site. But I don't want to promise not every pickup truck is not going to try to navigate down that street.
Concerns from the neighbors.
No, I understand, no argument. But, you know, we can control certainly, I mean, a truck hauling lumber, I would think, can't make it down that road anyway. So we'll get them to a better access. I mean, I think that's what we got to do. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I got one more, I got one more. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
One of the things that you indicated at the very beginning here was that this plan was important so that it would allow Albemarle to continue to be a viable operation. How is, how are you going to be able to do that in the long run? You're going to build the residential areas, the multifamilies and whatnot, but what sort of, how are you going to do your cash flow so that it maintains, so that you're going to be able to have cash flow in the long, in the long run for years down the way?
Well, I mean, certainly, you know, let's say we throw, I mean, if there's 500 more people living in this area, obviously that helps with memberships. They're losing the pool now with Bishop Seaberry, so we need to replace those activities. Revamping the golf course, we think will bring more members for years. And Bob Johnson and Jerry Magnuson are here to help answer some of these questions. So new banquet facilities, I mean, golf courses, there's no argument. This is not a no-brainer to do this. I mean, golf courses struggle every day. There are a lot of people that live on the course that understand the importance, if you live on a golf course, about having a golf course and golf course sort of activities behind you. So I think all that bleeds into it. KU, new practice facilities for University of Kansas for both men's and women's golf team. I mean, that certainly, they're obviously a part of this. The little things like the ponds, I mean, that, you know, you can save a quarter of a million dollars not having to pay for water every year is a pretty good chunk. You know, we haven't really touched on Eagle Bend. Eagle Bend has a couple of advantages here, you know, a dollar in property tax and zero for water. That, those two things alone are $422,000 difference for Albemarle. So like you said, there's actually a longer list that's been growing about, I mean, this is not an easy project, so we're hoping to minimize the other things that get added to it. But, I mean, it's a phenomenal facility. The championship course is a great golf course. Like I said, I can talk to you about golf for an hour as well. But so we're excited about it.
It kind of sounds like you're trying to make it a destination golf course, kind of.
I mean, I've been lucky that, you know, for people, I don't know if anybody plays golf, but, you know, Austin Barton Creek is a phenomenal place to go when people come in. We got to play University of Texas's golf course and their football game. They got us, we couldn't play Friday because so many people were there for the Saturday game, but you got to play Thursday and, I mean, things like that. And that leads into the whole idea of some of the cabins or the hotel rooms like Flint Hills National in Wichita. I mean, just a phenomenal place to go. People, you travel and, you know, and they'll come and they'll go to it and it'll be great. So we're very excited.
That fourth plot that was originally senior living or assisted living, and that was kind of pulled at the 11th hour before the planning commission. Was there a reason for that or just a change of heart?
Well, we had been in negotiations with a group that was going to take it over and we pulled it 11-hour on purpose because we didn't have a deal with them. And the last thing I wanted to do was to present this thing and go through all those with all the neighbors that backed up to it and then pull it, you know, essentially after the fact. So.
Are you still seeking that deal?
We've looked at a smaller one. We love the idea in the sense that even though it was a pretty wide building, but it was one story, which a couple of those, the neighbors are here tonight and they may mention that, that I think they're okay with things behind their house. But one, it was actually a great fit because it was one story with a walkout on the second. But we knew they weren't going to be the partner, so if they weren't going to be it, I thought it was better to pull it than to, you know, have a hearing and talk about it and then wind up changing our minds later. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. I'm going to open it up to public comment. Again, I would like to remind everybody, I would like to have your comments to five minutes. You know, I'll be the official timekeeper, I guess. I'm the hardest guy around, so anyway. At this point, Mr. Lawrence, you'd like to go first? If we could have your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Douglas Lawrence, ironically, and I live at 2106 Greenbrier Drive, which is right on the second tee box of the public side of the golf course. We're all very excited that the golf course might be saved. I think there are residents here who have had concerns, but we'd love for the golf course to stay a golf course. That's a nice thing. Is this the plan that will make that happen? Well, I'm not absolutely sure long range. If it doesn't work, the effect of, the value of our land could vary widely from where it is right now and it's probably my largest investment. I'll be really brief. I've been through all the planning commission meetings. I really appreciate the help of Sandy and Mr. Warner and other people who've answered questions along the way. I have one primary concern, you've already addressed it at great length tonight, and that is that if construction is going to start on that project, it needs to come off of Bob Billings because our little crossgate is a small street and people park along one side of it. And it means that you sometimes, even in normal traffic, have to stop and wait for another car to come through. Any kind of construction equipment, trucks, is going to cause a huge bottleneck there. It's also a very dangerous street in the sense that it comes off of a very busy street and it narrows quite drastically. There is a school there, as you know, Bishop Seaberry is on the frontage road. And so I'm concerned about safety and security long range. Thank you for your attention and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Other public comment?
I'll start talking while he's writing.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the commission. I'm Paul Davis with Megan Emmert Davis. I'm here tonight representing two homeowners associations, Woodfield Meadows West Homeowners Association and Woodfield Meadows Condominium Association. Jim Evers, who is president of one of those associations, is here. And we've got a couple of members that reside there that are here as well. These, I'll try to use Mr. Warner's visual aid here. If you come into Albemarle off of Bob Billings and you take that kind of skinny road there, the folks that live in these two homeowners associations are the folks that live on either side of that road. So you can naturally understand what the concerns were from the start. We approached the developer early on in the process and frankly, he understood exactly what our concerns were. And that's where we got to the new road. And we're very pleased with that. That deals with a great deal of the concerns that we have. I do want to just speak to a couple of issues that I think have been touched on already and kind of some remaining issues that we want to stay involved with. First of all, the existing access point onto Crossgate. What we would like to do is to close that off. We have had some discussions with city staff about emergency access and I think that that's an issue that they still want to look at a little bit more and whether we would want to have a gate or something like Mr. Warner described where two vehicles could access that. But it would create essentially kind of a cul-de-sac and the folks that live off of Crossgate and onto Vintage Court there would then access onto essentially the new road there. One issue that has been mentioned a little bit that is certainly of interest to us is just the entire issue of drainage. A lot of the folks that live in this area are downhill from the golf course and there's already some drainage issues. You will note in the staff recommendations, there's a requirement for drainage study and I think that's going to help alleviate some of the concerns and address the concerns that we have. And then the last issue is really the issue of the construction equipment. And I think, Mr. Mayor, you've asked very good questions about that and I think we've probably gone over that pretty well. This is a unique road. Interestingly enough, right now, that is a private road that goes through there. There's an easement agreement between the homeowners association and Albemarle. But if you've ever driven on that road, it's not a road that is going to be very feasible to have a lot of construction vehicles going back and forth. And I think the developer understands that. I know the city staff understands it and we've got to work together to make sure that we have a plan to address that in the final development plan. So those are the issues that we're working with. You know, the folks that I represent are excited about this project. They live in Albemarle for a reason and they want to see Albemarle continue to thrive. And this is, as has been mentioned, I think, a plan to save Albemarle and we appreciate the developer and the staff working with us to address our concerns.
Paul, real quick, just so that I understand again, the neighbors at the current Crossgate and the entrance coming off Bob Billings, that is the, you're talking about closing that entrance?
That entrance, yes. Because the traffic will then be going through the new road to access Albemarle.
So, just so that I'm clear, that probably wouldn't be a condition of, you know, approval of this item, but a separate item that we would direct staff to consider? Or to bring a recommendation to us?
Well, it's a desire of the neighborhood, first of all, to close that at Bob Billings and take access. This is once the new crossgate is open. That they would take access from new crossgate back into that development and then we would probably, we would likely get a fire access point where the existing access is for emergency services to come in if needed. We haven't fully vetted that. It was, again, kind of conceptual discussions at this point, I think, by all parties. All parties are working toward addressing the main concern, which is all of the new Albemarle traffic through the neighborhood. So all the new traffic goes on Crossgate to Bob Billings, leaving this enclave of residential units as essentially a cul-de-sac area.
Well, I want you to know, I wouldn't be opposed to that. You know, the consideration of closing Bob Billings at Crossgate. But my concern would be to the folks that you represent is to make sure that would be a very long cul-de-sac and getting emergency services back in there without some kind of emergency access off Bob Billings, I think, might put some folks in a little bit of harm's way. And in good conscience, I probably couldn't do that. If we can work out, if we can work out some kind of arrangement that that's taken care of, I don't have a problem with that. Then I'd recommend that to the commission quite honestly. But again, would that need to be a condition of part of this development?
It's not a condition as much as it's side agreements between essentially the neighborhood group and the applicant that is progressing in a very positive way right now. And so it's not necessarily, I think, the development is reflecting the agreement in building Crossgate Drive. That's their part of the deal.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. Any questions, Paul? Thanks, Paul. Other public comment? Any other public comment?
Do you want me to respond to the question?
I want you to please come forward. Good to see you, Mr. Johnson.
Hey, good to see you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Bob Johnson and I live at 957 Covington Drive. But I stand before you tonight as the president of the Albemarle Corporation, so I speak on behalf of the shareholders. And, you know, it bothers me just a little bit when I hear people say this is going to save Albemarle because that's sort of a death nail. And I don't think they mean that and that's not the case. But the fact of the matter is, this is the best thing that can possibly happen to the Albemarle entity and certainly the best thing that could happen to the Albemarle shareholders. Some people say that when they go and they play on Albemarle today, there's, they sort of get a sense that maybe some of the infrastructure's a little tired. And that's a nice way of saying it needs to be upgraded. But if you think that's tired, I can assure you that the 100 shareholders who have been involved with Albemarle for 40-plus years are far, far tireder, okay? And it's a fair question to say, well, why do you think this is going to save Albemarle and Albemarle is not being saved? I would submit to you that if I were the owner of Albemarle and if I had the resources and if I had the will and the vision and the commitment, I could do the same thing. But the 100 shareholders who own Albemarle today do not have that will, do not have those resources, do not have, frankly, don't have the leadership or the commitment to go forward because of a long, long-term commitment. And Paul mentioned water, for example. Albemarle spends almost, on average, a quarter of a million dollars a year buying water. If we had the money to invest in these ponds and the irrigation system, we could eliminate most of that cost. But we don't have the money and we don't have the shareholders who are interested are willing to make that commitment going forward. It's, so it is a fact. It's an absolute fact. If you live on Albemarle or near Albemarle in the Albemarle district and you value that resource in our community, this is without a doubt the best thing that can happen, without a doubt. I'm sure that it is not going to get better unless somebody is willing to come along with the resources and the commitment to our community to do it. It isn't going to happen with the current ownership. Because it can't. So nine oh from the planning commission, it's good for everybody and especially good for the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Other public comment? Anyone else? Thank you all for coming this evening. Back to the commission. We do have a, again, unanimous recommendations from the planning commission, you know, and in all honesty, in, you know, what would be a perfect world as suggested yesterday. This would be an item that, very honestly, we would see on the consent agenda because of the unanimous recommendation. But, you know, the only reason that it is, is I believe it's important for this body to be able to talk about the items that have come forward. Bob, I appreciate the fact that you bring it up that this is not kind of really talking about saving Albemarle because I never thought in my wildest dreams that that would be something I would ever discuss. But, you know, it's something that I do think that it's come a long way in the process through the discussions and everything that's come forward. And I got to say this, I appreciate, you know, the developer coming forward and trying to come up with a plan that will give the financial backing to help take care of the long-term costs and effects that, you know, Albemarle is going to go through. I got to tell you, I got to thank the neighbors. I mean, this has been a long haul. I really, I believe that there has been a lot of people that have had a lot of discussions about a project, obviously, that is very important. Obviously, it's going to affect a lot of, you know, a lot of folks. But I think, in all honesty, in a pretty positive way. Doug, I appreciate your comments about the fact, for most of us, our home is our number-one investment and we want to make sure that we don't do anything that's going to be able to jeopardize that investment. You know, if the point in time stops here and it doesn't go up another dime, we want to make sure that we're not losing that. And I think that, you know, here's an opportunity that as we look at it, if Albemarle was to not make it, what not make it, what would be the effect on your investment? And I think it would be substantial and I mean, that's one of the things that we've looked at. My main concern here, I mean, obviously, is access and that access road. And I don't know how you write the condition, but I do think that there has got to be a concern here that we don't end with the, we don't have a process happen like what's happened at the end and I'm not blaming anybody in the western part, I want everybody to know that, but I want to make sure that we learn from that experience and how we condition this site, that that access road in some kind of form is built before the construction begins and that's all, all I believe is important here. I think that the planning commission, the planning staff, you know, everybody from our staff that's been involved in this, I think has done a very good job in making sure that, you know, the neighbors' concerns have been taken into consideration through all of this with the work of the developer here and, you know, and I think that's very important to say, but the access is something that I think that we have to have as a body, you know, an understanding that it's going to be taken care of, so.
We appreciate that direction.
Okay.
It's helpful.
So, do we need to write that condition tonight?
The only thing that I could...
I know the condition's there, I can see it, but...
Mayor, if this body wants to see that plan and approve it and not the planning commission, that would be the only revision that you might consider. If it's, if it's that important that the commission wants to weigh in on that decision and the finer points of it, which is balancing when and how and what design level and all the lessons, I guess, we learned out west because we all sort of recently lived through that, that would be the only revision I could think of. Otherwise, all the work is yet to be done with it and we haven't talked about it since the planning commission, so we haven't figured out any details yet.
Scott, and to the members of the commission and the folks here assembled tonight, I have full faith in our planning commission and the work that they've done and the ability that they've shown to make, you know, the recommendations on this. I think as long as it's understood that, you know, the item that we want in there, there may be others, but, you know, for me, it's just this access, as long as that is defined somehow so that we don't have a similar situation, you know, as we've had in the West, you know, I'm fine with continuing to follow the normal process that we would have, which would be have the planning commission look at it in this case rather than the administrative staff, so.
Yeah, and again...
I'm not sure, I'm not sure another step is required in this.
And with, with public input and legal representation, I think that if they're not satisfied, we will have a mechanism to bring it to your level in any event, so.
Okay. And again, as Mr. Davis brought up, representing, you know, his clients, do we need to have any language in here that talks about that side deal that needs to be made with the access?
I don't think so. That happens actually separately from this project.
Okay.
It's coordinated with it, but it's a separate item.
Okay, well, as long as we don't forget that. Okay. Other comments?
I'm particularly excited about the new Crossgate being built. In another life, I had done some maintenance work over at Woodfield Meadows and I can tell you, having driven a truck with a trailer through the current Crossgate, that I have no concern that that will be happening. It's, it's not, it is doable. I've done it and I'm here today and lived from the experience, but I know that all the communication I've had on this matter, I've actually had no communication with anyone so far upset with the size of the buildings or the existence of the buildings or, or anything of that matter. It's, all the communication I've had has been very specific to the current Crossgate Drive and the fact that it's just not a feasible construction road. You've got, you've got every obstacle you could think of. I mean, short of rolling boulders down the middle of the street for fun.
I'm impressed you got through.
Oh, oh yeah, oh yeah. It's not my first time, but I'm sure. But it's, it's, it's something that, you know, obviously, I think the idea of constructing that road originally was designed to make it so that it was a neighborhood street and it was designed to be not super convenient to the rest of the world with the notion that perhaps we didn't want the rest of the world driving through that as their cut-through and unfortunately, I think, through a series of letters to the editor that I've read and numerous emails, I think that may have happened anyway and there's a lot of, a lot of anger about that. And so, I think one of the, as a community as a whole, certainly there are very specific benefits to Alvamar from this, but for the community as a whole, I think that new Crossgate may actually end up being one of the, one of the kind of the best kept secrets about this redevelopment, if you will. So, I do agree with you though, Mayor, that we need to make sure, having learned from our previous experience, I really don't want to be sitting here in six months when neighbors come forth with their photos of every horrible thing that's happening in their front yard, so we do need to make sure that that's avoided this time.
Okay. Anyone else?
I think it feels great looking forward to it. I'm glad that Crossgate, not to repeat anything else, but I'm just going to say, new Crossgate is great.
Okay, that's good. Well, again, I thank everyone for their questions, comments. I think it's a good plan overall. Okay, Scott or Sandy, if you could put back up on there our action and the, with all the conditions that we have, I would appreciate it. And we'll take these one at a time. The first is the rezoning. I'd read them off, but I think my voice is getting ready to go, folks. I see those, yeah, they'll be flying after a while.
This is the rezoning.
No, I got it. Okay, so the conditions that the planning commission has on the rezoning are the same ones that were in the staff report. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to concur with the planning commission's recommendation for the rezoning of the property with the conditions listed and that this item will be returned to the planning commission. No, 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 no.
Mayor, you essentially, you have, items A and B have ordinances related to them.
Right.
It's the rezoning and special use permit and then item C doesn't have an ordinance, it's the approval of the preliminary development plan with the condition to go, that the final development plan go back to the planning, you submit it to the planning commission.
Okay, so on the first item, I would entertain a motion to concur with the planning commission's recommendation on the rezoning request and to adopt on first reading ordinance number 9154 and that is with the conditions that are laid out from the planning commission.
So moved.
I have a motion made in second for approval of that item, the ordinance on first reading, ordinance number 9154 and the concurrence with the planning commission, made by Commissioner Bowley and second by Vice Mayor Soden. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That item passes five zero. The special use permit, I would entertain a motion to approve the special use permit for the active recreation uses in Alvamar Plan Development, 1800 and 1809, Crossgate Drive, proposed lots one and three, and adopt on first reading ordinance number 9155.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval was made by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Herbert. Any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes five zero. Next item is to approve the preliminary development plan for Alvamar containing approximately fifty acres and located at 1809 Crossgate Drive. Entertain a motion for approval of the preliminary development plan.
So moved.
Motion made in second was made by Commissioner Larson, second by Vice Mayor Soden. Any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes five zero. Again, thank you all very much for this evening. See y'all.
What's the score?
Give me something to look forward to, buddy.
Yeah, go home.
Do that?
What?
Our, nothing. Bottom half.
Very good.
You should do.
How about that?
I have to admit, I did look. Okay. Vice Mayor Soden will be right back. Next item on the agenda is to receive an update on the franchise agreement with Black Hills Energy. Ray, do you need this?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So, my goal this evening is to be brief and to give you an update on our process and discussions with Black Hills Energy.
We survived before these things.
Flint, steel.
Well, I apologize.
I'm getting a score.
It's just, it's just taking its time.
Now, tell us, it's just so she knows too. One and another, one and another.
Well, no update tonight.
Yep. That's it. Let's go walk.
Ah, there he is.
I mean, sorry. Okay, I apologize for that. So, I've already used about half the time I was hoping to use.
You tried.
Um, I'll make this brief, but, but we did want to bring this to your attention and to the public's attention. We've been working with Black Hills Energy on their natural gas franchise agreement for quite some time now and we're ready to bring that forward in the form of an ordinance for formal action by the city commission. We'll get to that here in a minute, but just wanted to give you an overview, since this will be the first franchise ordinance that the majority of you will, will have considered for adoption, give you an overview kind of what our franchise agreements are, what they mean to the city and to the, to the private utilities and then just kind of talk about this agreement specifically. Franchise agreements are authorized by statute, adopted by local ordinance. They essentially enable investor-owned utilities to be in city-owned right-of-way. We own a lot of right-of-way, as you know, and there's a lot of stuff in that right-of-way that we have to manage, so this is basically their license to do that and in compensation, the city receives a payment in lieu of taxes. That, that payment is usually calculated as a percentage of the utility's gross receipts. The type of franchise agreements we have, which are, again, it goes back to state statute, are electric utilities, natural gas, wire telephone, landline telephone and cable television. This is a picture of our, of our franchise fee revenue for the city. Franchise revenue, it comprises roughly ten percent of the general fund resources, so it's a significant revenue source for the city. This particular chart breaks up the revenue, divides it by the different types, the four different types of franchise agreements that we have. Within those, there are multiple agreements with multiple utilities, so we have two natural gas franchise agreements, for example, but this is the, this is the comprehensive picture. You see somewhat of a, of a growth trend over the previous six years or so. The majority of that growth comes from our electric franchise agreement. Our natural gas franchise revenue has been flat, actually, really for the last fifteen years. Cable, television and, and landline phone service, those, those revenue sources have also been pretty flat. I think that there's, there's fairly obvious reasons in the, in those industries why that's occurring. With, with natural gas, it's actually because of our franchise agreement and the way that we calculate the fees, so we'll talk a little bit about that. The background on this particular agreement, before the year 2000, we had an old franchise agreement that established a, or it assessed a five percent franchise fee, that's five percent on gross receipts for all Lawrence customers. There was no volume metric rate, which means that wholesale transport customers, their usage was, was not subjected to the franchise fee, so they basically got a free ride. The current franchise took effect in the year 2000 and was negotiated prior to that in 1999 and 1998. We haven't leveraged the option to touch that, to change it, alter it in the last fifteen years. It is expired now, so we're kind of operating on, on a, I guess, good faith effort and Black Hills is upholding the terms of the agreement and the city's upholding the terms of the agreement, so we do, we do need to formalize that, though. The, the current fee was designed to capture those wholesale customers, those transport customers and was also designed to maintain essentially the equivalent rate of a five percent franchise fee. This is a look, I won't walk you all through this, it's in the memo and in the current ordinance, but this is the structure that we use to calculate the natural gas franchise fee currently with, with Black Hills. So, the current, the current franchise fee, as I said, the revenue has been flat. There's some issues with the way that that, that this table, this calculation impacts that revenue source. It doesn't, it doesn't allow the revenue to reflect market factors, to be reactive to the rises and the falls of the market and then the, the overall natural growth, long-term growth of, of the commodities market. Another, another issue is the technology that has been developed and, you know, implemented in people's homes and businesses over the last fifteen years. It's much more efficient and so, so that has sort of, sort of, I think, resulted in plateau of consumption of gas. The long-term growth, because of the way that the, the fee is calculated, is, is also limited by the creation of new, new demand, so essentially new development, the addition of new users. And so, all of that has, has resulted, like I said, in stagnant revenue for the last fifteen years. The proposed, the proposal and the reason why we're focusing on, on the franchise fee in this quick update is, is because that's the significant change in the ordinance that we're going to be bringing forward. So, the proposal is for a three percent fee on gross receipts plus the volume metric rate on wholesale customers. That volume metric rate is calculated based on NYMEX settlements. NYMEX is the New York Mercantile Exchange, so that's the commodities market that the natural gases is traded on. We have the experts here from Black Hills, Monique Pope and Chuck Ho, who I should have recognized at the beginning, I apologize, but they can explain that or we can, we can provide any, any follow-up correspondence as well for you, just, just on what those, how those settlements are calculated. The ordinance, the ordinance also spells that out. The, the objectives of the proposed fee, we didn't want to create a rate shock or, you know, a tremendous increase for residents and in our businesses. Anytime you start, you know, changing, messing with the franchise fee, it has, it has broad impacts because you do have different customer classes. You know, your, your wholesale customers, they're, the way that they get gas and consume gas is completely different than a residential customer. The residential customer, you purchase it completely from the utility, you pay the utility for transportation and so forth, so. So, it was, it was kind of complex calculation, complex math, but we were able to keep, keep our change at a level that essentially keeps, what keeps the city's revenue essentially flat with a little bit of growth in the next year and then the impact on consumers, particularly residential meters, is going to be very minimal, well under a dollar a year. The, the other objectives were to, to allow the city to, I guess, benefit from the long-term growth in markets and also to allow the consumers to benefit when, when the markets go down as well, so. So we're going to have a react, a rate that's reactive to the year-to-year, year-over-year market factors, but is also reactive to the long-term growth in the commodities market. The other objectives were basically just to keep, to maintain the status quo. We have a good working relationship with the utility. When they need to get in and do, do work, they work well with our Public Works Department, who manages our right-of-way. When we need them to relocate their facilities for our projects, we've had, we've had good experiences there as well. So we want to maintain that, we want to protect the city assets, the city right-of-way, and just, and just continue operating as we have over the last 15 years. So, so as I said, the bulk of the change with this forthcoming ordinance is focused on that franchise fee. We do, I guess I should mention, the City of Lawrence is the only city, at least, that is served by Black Hills that calculates the franchise fee the way that we calculate it. So we also wanted to sort of, sort of apply that industry practice of a percentage fee on gross receipts to the city's franchise ordinance. Next up, again, this is purely an update tonight, we wanted to make sure it was on everybody's radar. Receive any questions that you might have, any feedback. We can, we can provide follow-up reports if you have anything you would like us to look into, any research specifically over the next couple of weeks. And then we'll be back, we're hoping November 17th, if the timing works out on the agendas, to present the ordinance for your, your formal action. We, we've engaged a couple of the major stakeholders, especially on the commercial side of the situation. So they've, one of, one of the main stakeholders is KU, the University of Kansas, and, and they obviously operate on a different fiscal year, the July 1 fiscal year. So they've requested, just to enable them to accommodate for any increases that they may experience in the franchise fee, they've requested that we, we delay implementation until July 16th, or, I mean, July 1, 2016. We also suggest, just as staff, and I think the utility representatives would also suggest, delay implementation until the summer, just because the winter is, is the heavy consumption time for users. So if, you know, if residents haven't had an opportunity to really plan that in their family budgets, then this is not necessarily the time to implement any type of increase, even if it is minimal. So that's, that's the update. I'll stand for questions, like I said, Chuck and Monique are here also. So if you have any questions or would like any more follow-up research, then, yes, no.
So Brandon, still again, you're suggesting that the residential class here is going to be, through this change, as we come from what we've been doing in the past to the practices being done by every other city that Black Hills serves, we're going to see an increase in franchise fees combined less than a dollar a year, and I think yesterday you said 70 cents or something like that?
Correct.
Somewhere in there, okay. And so, again, of the small commercial and the small volume and large volume, who's going to be hit the hardest here? Just so that I know.
Yeah, so this, this table, this uses the 2015 market situation, because that's what we had at the time that we did the analysis. The NYMEX settlements, and this is an example of how this fee will be reactive to the markets. The NYMEX settlements have changed for 2016, which, which will happen every year, they'll go up and down. And so the impact in 2016, we just got those, those settlements, it's actually going to be much less than this for the transport customers. But those transport customers are going to be the ones who would be most dramatically impacted. Actually, with the 2016 numbers, and I'll have those for you when we present the ordinance for final adoption, with those 2016 numbers, a lot of, a lot of these lines here, these transport customers, is actually going to decrease. So they'll see in, at least in the second half of 2016, a year-over-year decrease. But those, but that's where, that's where some of the biggest changes will be seen. Our residential customers, the NYMEX settlements won't, won't impact that necessarily. We're still, I believe, projecting less than a dollar annual change for those customers, for our residential customers. So on the, on the volume metric side, on the transport wholesale side, that's where you're going to see the biggest change. I don't want to, we can't really divulge, you know, customer-specific information, but we have made an attempt to engage the largest commercial users, again, one of which is, which is KU. KU has a large number of meters because of all their different facilities and the way that they, they purchase their gas and distribute that. So, so a lot of those meters that you see, that are going to be in that transport, transport, those categories, are going to be KU meters, actually. I think all in all, we have 130-something transport customers? Yeah, between 120 and 130 transport customers. And you can imagine how many, how many KU has, how many meters KU has? Forty, there you go, 47.
Other questions of Brandon right now? Chuck, do you have any additional things you want to add?
Not, not at this time, I mean, we just appreciate the relationship that we've had, as you all know, that, you know, our predecessor companies go back to the 1890s, and we've had a great relationship with the City of Lawrence, and we look forward to continuing to serve the City of Lawrence. Any questions relating specifically to the way this new fee will be assessed? You know, back 15 years ago, there was concerns about people, you know, transporting the gas, going through marketers, deregulation, if you will. So that was the reason behind that thought process. And as customers' equipment became more efficient, there has been declining use per customer. That's why that 5% is kind of tapered down to about a 3% level. And I think what Brandon has, you know, introduced as far as using the gross receipt and the volume metric fee, that's what all the other communities that we serve are using now, so I think it's a good way for the city to stay on top of that, and also to, you know, look at those five-year windows, because there's an opportunity there to tweak things as you go. Mostly, I think the franchise will probably have five-year windows, if I'm not mistaken, so.
I thought I'd be a wise guy, you want to talk about that Quonset hut and the franchise agreement?
Do I want to talk about it right now?
I just thought I'd bring it up.
As a matter of fact, we'll talk about it tomorrow a little bit.
I just thought I'd bring it up right now, you know? You know, there's one thing about franchise, franchise agreement with Black Hills, you know, I'm not going to tell my age a whole lot, but when I first got elected here, we had your predecessor, being Kansas Public Service Company, and that franchise agreement, we used to set in rate hearings as a governing body. We used to, you know, be the group that set the rates, so you talk about fun.
That was, yeah, up until, what, 1983? Three, yeah, Missouri Public Service Boss.
Yeah, Mo Pop, yeah.
Unfortunately, I've been here about as long, not as long as you, but pretty close.
Pretty close, it was pretty close. Okay. Questions to Chuck?
Mine is interested in the Quonset hut.
Well, yeah.
I will provide a brief update on that tomorrow at our lunch.
Okay. Well, I figured, you know, if it was something that could be included in the franchise agreement, I'd ask.
No, sir.
Well, it didn't hurt to bring it up, I guess. Okay, well, we appreciate it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to lunch, but don't leave, we'll ask for public comment in case there's questions that we might need additional help for. Is there any public comment on this item this evening? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Katie Walsh, speaking only for myself. I distributed this because I'm here tonight just to ask you a favor, something you could do tomorrow while you're at lunch. There are, I'm not the only one really interested in preservation of the Quonset hut-like building on East 8th Street. And so I think there's been a little bit of a mix-up or a miscommunication, because I've talked to three people who are having, have not been able to get a returned phone call or returned email from Black Hills, and they've gone to the corporate level and still no response. And I understand if they don't want to discuss it, but I brought Mr. Hockmeister's info, contact information. He's the head of the Sculpture Department at KU. He, on behalf of the Fine Arts Department at KU, would very much like to talk to Mr. Hoag. And he's put in several calls and emails, he tried to get to him through an underling. Nothing has been successful, and I'm sure this is just a mix-up, but he would very much like to just have a conversation. And so I was asking you if tomorrow at lunch, maybe you could ask Mr. Hoag if he would call him. Thank you.
Okay. Please, Chuck.
Sure. I, I apologize, I didn't, I don't know that I've ever got a call from Mr. Hockmeister.
You have. Maybe somebody's not telling you.
Okay, I'll be happy to contact him. We've had several people that have, we have a lot of people who have been, showed interest in that facility, but we, at this time, we're not doing anything with it, so, and we'll talk about that. But bottom line is, the facility itself, we are utilizing it for a emergency fueling station, and we're using it for storage for the time being, until we make a decision as to what we want to do going forward. We've had a lot of different people that have approached us with different opportunities, and we'll continue to look at those. And to my knowledge, I thought we'd kind of, or talked to everybody. I know that I talked to somebody at KU that wanted to use it for an art studio, and at that point in time, you know, we weren't willing to just give the billing to the university for an art studio, so.
Thank you, it was a great, you called in.
I, I will do so, thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Any other public comment? Okay, back to the Commission. So the direction that you need is that, well, you don't need any, you're going to be placed on the agenda on the 17th?
It will be, back in front of you for formal action then. Again, as Brandon explained, the, the action tonight, the discussion tonight was just to make sure that you all were aware of what was coming, and the public was as well.
Okay. Well, I appreciate, Brandon, I appreciate the work that you've done. I know, on behalf of the Commission, we appreciate the work that you've done. One of the big things is, is I know that we want to make sure that we don't see, you know, in the majority of these classes, you know, large increases, that if it can be a wash of some kind, I know that that would be the best overall win. Know that that probably can't happen, but anyway, there's going to be, some goes up, some goes down. But taking into consideration, you know, the residential class, you know, as little effect as possible, and I think that you've done that, so, anyway. Okay. Thing else? Look forward to seeing you on the 17th. Thank you all. Thank you for coming this evening. Okay. Next item. Consider authorizing interim city manager to execute a supplemental agreement, number one, in the engineering services agreement with HDR in the amount of $3,000, or $360,978 for design and bid phase engineering services for project number UT 1307, the Oriet storage tank and booster pump station replacement on the existing site.
On the existing site. Good evening, Mayor, AMEX, and City Commissioners, I'm Philip Sheschelsky, Assistant Director for the Department of Utilities. With me in support, we have Lori Hill, a representative from HDR, she'll be our project manager on this project, Dave Wagner, Director of Utilities, and Mike Wallace, Deputy Director of Utilities. So if I get stumped, I have some help. Got a few slides here to go through rather quickly, and at that point, we'll stand for questions on the project. Basically, the facilities that we are talking about are located along the east side in the 1200 block of Oriet Avenue. To the south, you have the KU Alumni Center immediately adjacent. You have the ECU Medical Center immediately, immediately adjacent to the north, and then the Oriet Hotel, which is just off the page to the north at the intersection of 12th and Oriet Avenue. At the location, we have two storage tanks with a total of 1.23 million gallons of storage. We have Hoover, our 1931 riveted storage tank, holds about a million gallons, and we have Ike, the 1954 welded steel storage tank, which holds 1.3 million gallons. There's also a booster pump station there that allows us to pump water out of those tanks at a rate of 1.8 million gallons per day, which is a little, about 1,200 gallons per minute. The location of these, of this facility is fairly unique within the system. The tanks, by virtue of their elevation on that hill, act as an elevated storage tank and supply the lower Central Service District to the east by gravity. So they act as an elevated tank at that location for our lower elevations to the east. The booster pump station allows us to pump to the higher elevations on campus and westward to the Western Hills pressure zone. So their, their location there, Oriet in Louisiana, is unique, and they are located at a place where they have an intersection of both transmission and distribution piping for those two systems. This project has been a priority for quite some time within the department. Both the 2003 Water Master Plan, as well as the 2012 Integrated Water Utility Plan, identified this project and had it as a priority for replacement based on the condition of the tanks and some of the operating characteristics associated with the current facility. It also follows through on some of the citizen survey part, the results of the recent citizen survey priorities, which indicated that maintenance of utilities, that item consistently ranked in the top three within that survey of citizen priorities. Following along that theme, this project was one of three high-priority projects within the water system as part of our 2013 and 2017, through 2017 capital improvement and rate plan for the water distribution system. Two other projects that were in there at kind of the same level of criticality, we have the Call Water Treatment Plant, raw water intake, which has recently been completed. This provided a second source of supply to the Call Water Treatment Plant at Third and Indiana off the Kansas River. Then we had the Call Water Treatment Plant Transmission Main, Phase 1, the first phase of a multi-phase project to take both treated water from that same treatment plant through North Lawrence, ultimately down to 23rd and O'Connell Road area. Phase 1 took us from the plant north, across the Kansas River, and immediately provided a second source of supply to the North Lawrence area, which up to that point had been served by a single bike line dating back to the 70s underneath the Vermont Street Bridge over the river. So the Oriet Storage Tank Project is the remaining of those three priority projects in that group. At this point, if we were to start design this evening, we forecast that this project would be complete with construction the fourth quarter of 2018. In 2012, we took the tanks down, and we had them drained, we had them cleaned out. Company Utility Service Corporation, as well as city staff, did an intensive inspection on the facilities inside and out. Results of that indicated severe corrosion to the steel structures, failed interior and exterior coatings, failing and missing structural members, particularly in the roof structures, inadequate tank venting, manway access, roof access, ladders, general security to the site and tanks. And again, due to the virtue of their age, they are currently not compliant with any current OSHA standards for safety, American Water Works Association standards for water storage tank construction maintenance, Kansas Department of Health and Environment Design Criteria, and other safety design and operational standards. We've got some photos here that show some of what we found. You can see the picture to the left, there are actually, there's a missing roof member at this location, a roof beam. These two beams have separated from the wall or are hanging down. You can see general corrosion, fairly severe corrosion along the outside where the wall meets the roof. This is a little closer up picture of one of the areas, extensive corrosion. If this picture were larger, I think probably on your laptop or your iPad, you can see kind of areas in here where some severe pitting in the roof structure has been painted over previously. Again, this picture here is from the, on the left is from the interior coating. The bubbles indicate that moisture is behind the coating, so the coating has failed. We've got water behind the coating and on the steel itself. To the right, you can see some corrosion, severe corrosion on the roof hatch, both inside and out.
You mean, that doesn't, that doesn't meet any kind of OSHA things?
That doesn't mean anything, I know, other than criteria to replace it.
I'm shocked.
About the only criteria standard it meets is replacement. Here again, you can see a couple of roof beams that have separated from the wall, both of those, and additional areas of corrosion, kind of a close-up of one of the beams in a state of fairly progressed corrosion, and probably not far from failure at that joint. Again, roof beam corrosion in both locations. We also found, you know, the exterior of the tanks, there are a number of areas where the exterior coatings have been touched up and painted in the past. There are some of the joints on the riveted steel tank that have been caulked in the past to address leaks. We have areas of failed foundation, concrete foundation under the tanks. And the existing coatings on the tanks are a lead-containing product, which is problematic and expensive in terms of a rehab, a removal, and a repaint, a rehab of those structures. So our recommendation going forward is a replacement of both water storage tanks, as well as the booster pump station. We've got some work to do in Louisiana Street to the east of the site, where we have the incoming water mains to the tanks, as well as the booster pump station. as well as the mains that take the water from the tanks out into the distribution system and the pump station discharge. We've got some rehabilitation and cleanup to do in Louisiana Street of those mains. And we're also proposing improvements along the Louisiana Street frontage on the east side of our lot, where the lot drops off at a pretty steep slope. It's been very hard for us to maintain, keep mow, keep vegetation down. Our proposal is to continue what the Alumni Center did to the south in the way of some type of retaining wall and actually adding sidewalk to that frontage of the street of the property that's not there today. So where have we been? Back in 2000...March of 2013, I think we added a...we added a follow-up memo that gave a little more project history as to where this has been. Unfortunately, I took some of that out of the base memo trying to condense that. In March of 2013, we were authorized to advertise a request for proposal for the design of this project. In April...on April 19th of 2013, HDR was the only respondent to that request for proposals. May 7th, City Commission in 2013, again, City Commission authorized us to negotiate an engineering services agreement with HDR for the design work on this project. Between May and December, we worked under a preliminary agreement with HDR, with KU, with regard to some siting possibilities up there on Oriad Ave...Avenue with regard to moving the tanks, maybe freeing our site up for some of their expansion ideas on the Alumni Center. We'll see a little bit of that in the next couple of slides with the sites we looked at. And then in January of 2014, we actually executed a preliminary design-engineering services agreement with HDR. That final product was delivered in January of 2015. And since that time, we've been working with KU Planning Department on options as to how to maybe free some of that site up. And we're here today with kind of the summary of that and our recommendation. During that initial preliminary phase, we evaluated over a dozen site-tank-pumpstation combinations. We even looked at possibly a co-location of facilities, of existing facilities, by taking the Oriad facilities and moving them to Water Tower Park, which is where our Stratford tank is, the area of Stratford University just east of Iowa. We looked at a number of different opportunities or options for moving this. We did some hydraulic modeling to determine the required storage volume. Actually, I've come up with a smaller storage volume required at this site today by virtue of some of the additional improvements that have happened to the system over time since the last tank was built in 1954. We do recommend maintaining the existing location and the two-tank layout for reliability and operational considerations. In the future, we can take a tank down to clean it or maintain it. We still have the second one there. We're not without a tank at that location, which, as we discussed, is critical to us for the two pressure zones. And again, in coordination with KU, we evaluated various options for the use of our site, as well as their piece of property on the west side of Oriad Avenue, and the possibility of freeing that up for KU's uses on the east. So this is a representation of a layout on the existing site. You can see in the aerial photo the underlying tanks, the existing tanks, overlay kind of the footprint of the new tanks and a new pump station. And this area here just kind of represents the block of where we've got some water main improvements, as well as the sidewalk retaining wall, cleaning up that east side frontage. This is our base case. And it came in at approximately $4.9 million in the way of a total project cost. Again, we looked at a west site option. And KU approached us with the thought that by using this property of theirs on the west side, to the north of the parking garage, we could possibly vacate the existing site and allow them some expansion opportunities at the Alumni Center. As we tried to lay this out, we could not fit all of our facilities on their piece of property. We would have required property acquisition to the north. As we looked at that in more detail, finding that those properties were included in a historic district, the Hancock Historic District. The scope of this project, scale of the project, and the requirements or the limitations within what you can do in that district made that site unfeasible. So we kind of split the difference and looked at options of putting... What could we fit on KU's site? So we can fit a tank and we can fit a pump station on the west side, leaving us one tank to put back on the east side, freed up approximately the south half of that existing site for the university. KU Endowment, the university discussed that. And for the cost associated with us splitting that, getting on both sides, the base case was $4.9 million. This was approximately $5.7 million to construct across both sides of the street. They did not see the benefit for that amount of property for that cost. And basically told us they were not interested anymore. You go ahead and execute fully on your site. That's your recommendation. So that's the recommendation that we have brought forward. This kind of goes through those project estimates and the sites. Existing site being the lowest cost, meets all of our operational needs, volume, storage volume, does not provide any property for KU. Fully on the west side, $5.6 million would have made the existing east side site fully available to KU. However, we deem this not feasible due to the need to acquire that additional property and its inclusion in the historic district. And then the dual site, $5.7 million. Approximately half of that site, east side, would be available to KU. KU had reviewed and determined that that was not a feasible option for them. So even going back on our existing site, there will be some land use approvals. Maybe rezone and possibly site plan, if I'm right, Scott.
Special use...
Special use permit. Timeline on that's three to four months. That would happen concurrent with design. There's public notification as part of that process. We also have part of our scope with HDR. We've got time in for public meetings. I would envision we would also be back before this group with potential architectural discussions of how the tanks and the pump station are going to look, landscaping, screening, and those kind of things. Improvements to the site. And so with that, our recommendation is to replace the water storage tanks and the booster pump station on the existing site and execute a supplemental agreement with HDR as indicated on the memo for the ongoing design and bidding phase services. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions on the project contractor.
I shared with you yesterday, you and Dave and Diane, staff members, vice mayor, about my concern about, you know, the time lag between the original deal with HDR and where we are today and why we didn't go back to going out for requests for proposals or requests for qualifications for, you know, engineering services again. You know, I think as I look through this, I want to make sure that it's not a, you know, a no-bid deal. And that we gave everybody the opportunity to be able to bid on this. And I think from the things that you've told me that, you know, it probably makes sense that they were the only bidder that came forward in the beginning and, you know, kind of babyset this project a little bit all the way through. So if we proceed at this point, and I mean, something has to be done with the tanks, and I've been supportive of that, that's fine. This will be bid, right? The project itself will be bid?
The construction project will be bid. We'll have a full 100% set of plans and contract documents. Those will be publicly advertised. And we will take bids similar to any other construction project that we execute.
Okay.
At that time that we go to award that bid, we would come back with another supplement, provided HDR continues to successfully execute. And we can agree on a scope and a fee. We would bring a supplemental agreement with them to provide construction-based services or oversight for the project at that time.
Okay.
But as for the construction itself, public advertisement for roughly four weeks, bid opening here at the commission chambers and award to the lowest responsive responsible bidder.
Well, as I look at these tanks, and, you know, first of all, they're going to be taken down. You know, we just came through a project that, you know, making sure that access was taken into consideration. Sam, how are you going to build these things? I mean, you know, and the access that's going to happen there. I mean, taking them apart, I mean, those contraptions are huge.
They're big. Phasing will be a part of what we have to discuss. We have talked to KU. Since we're not building on their side across the street, we have the opportunity to...we're...have left that open to use that area for construction staging. So we just have to come back and forth across Oriad. One of the thoughts is we would remove one of the tanks, rebuild one of the new smaller ones. Gives us a little more room. And we're also going to make some improvements out of not improvements, but changes in the distribution system with some valving that'll allow water to crossflow between Central Service and West Hills, pressure-reducing valves that will kind of make up for some of what we lose here by just allowing that water to flow across the system. It's going to be a challenge. And that was some of when you kind of saw those other exhibits, you had the tank, actual tank footprint. And then there was another kind of halo out around that. And that's the area that's required around that tank for actual construction. When they go to remove these, from my experience at another utility in removing tanks, you know, they'll have a crane in. They'll cut these guys into sections and haul it off for recycling. And with the lead-based coating, that is actually a better way to get rid of that all still adhered to the tank than it is to try and blast that off and repaint it. There's a lot less restriction or requirements on how you do that.
Well, watching the demolition that went on at the former Farm Line side, Venture Park, and realized we had plenty of room out there. You know, and I just...I guess my big concern, and it passes along now, is just to make sure that safety is taken into consideration at all possible deals here. We have, what, 30-plus thousand people up there every day?
Students, you're going to have game days. I mean, the construction of this is going to go on for probably roughly 18 months. So we're going to go through all seasons. We're going to go through school. We're going to go through...you know, I don't know... Any of you had the opportunity to go down to Bertrand Park when we did the intake project? We had that area fully fenced. You know, I envision something similar to this on this site for security and keeping people in and out. KU also has a parking lot down at 12th and Louisiana, just to the northeast of here. Talked to Monty Soca at Endowment. Possibility of using that area for some staging and laydown. So we just don't have to haul the material and everything on this site. They can bring it up as they use it and just work within the, you know, the tank footprint.
Well, and I know you will. I know that, you know, safety is, you know, something so important to us. But I'm just kind of pounding it on a little bit. Because I...I just...oh, Lord.
And we can...
I can see some things happen here.
We can, as part of the coming back, we will be back to set a bid date as well. So that'll be part of when we have final design. Here's what we've got. We want to open bids on such-and-such date. Those are some of the things that, you know, we can point out as part of that memo or that communication is that phasing and those safety considerations and we're handling that.
Okay. And I wasn't on the commission when we approved either one.
That was before the time you were off. Between the first term and your third term.
I was done.
I was going to say... We previously named a Hoover and Ike. I was going to throw out that I don't mind naming one of them. Amick, you know?
No, not at all.
Ike and Mike, huh?
Yeah, there you go. Oh, wait. Other questions of staff?
Yeah, I'm curious about the hydraulic modeling to determine the storage volume. You say it's less than existing?
Right. We currently have about 2.3 million gallons across the two tanks. And we're recommending at this point 1.75. Some of what we are going to take into and what we have in the scope with HDR is to do some follow-up on that, bringing the KU Central District project into play, because that was not known at the time of the 2012 master plan or at the time we did some of the preliminary studies with HDR back in 2013. I've done some preliminary work in the office on it. I don't think it's going to impact us. But we're going to double-check that. But that change really, you know, in 1931 and 1954, other than the plants, these were about the only storage out in the system. And so as the system has grown and we've built outlying storage that's feeding back, the need for that amount of volume here is down, which we can right-size that from a water quality standpoint, water age. Not having too much water at that location that we can't then cycle through is part of the operational goal.
I guess I'm curious about what the footprint for the service area for this is. I guess I'm curious about what the footprint for the service area for this is. And, you know, if you can give me some on that, I'd like to see that.
Like I said, it serves, like, it doesn't have a definite service area. I mean, it's, it's impacting, you know, from there north to the river.
Right.
Down through downtown and east of downtown, we've got the Harper Tank that sits out at 19th and Harper by the, by the south, or 21st and Harper by the fire station down there. That's feeding kind of back this way, so somewhere in between there. But then by virtue of the booster pump station, we're pumping back towards basically the Stratford Tank area, which is over there at Water Tower Park, significant feed for the University of Kansas, down at their power plant down there at Sunnyside and, I'm saying it. It's, it's kind of central.
Yeah. There's, there's some development that's going on, redevelopment that's going on besides the master plan. I just didn't know what the, the impact that might have.
As, as things redevelop, we're typically taking something off and bringing something on. And there was some, you know, amount of development and fill accounted for in the master plan and some growth within KU as we did the master plan and looked forward through 2020, 2030 and build out, but it was not to the extent that the Central District is. But having taken an initial look at that, I don't think it's going to, I don't think it's going to impact the actual size of these tanks.
Good. Anything else? Philip, thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment on these items?
Hello, and Mayor and Commissioners, my name's Katie Wilson, and I'm speaking for all the artists of the world. Now that we have Porter O'Neil, who is our Director of Arts and Culture, and he's not here tonight, but it seems appropriate that this, this would qualify for the 1% to 2% for art when we do city-owned projects. And water tanks all over the world are great places to do art, sculpture, murals. There's, there's quite a variety of wonderful things that can be done. So I would ask that you would ask Mr. O'Neil to look at that and see if it qualifies. Thank you.
If you ask Porter to look at that?
Do that.
Okay. Okay, other public comment? Back to the commission. Yeah, it seems like one of those things that, you know, I've been working on for a long time, but, you know, never been, I guess, the right time, so now it is. The rest on that thing or corrosion is, I think it's getting worse.
I was really impressed with Stuart in the middle of taking those photo, looking at those photos, just sitting over here drinking his water. It's a brave man right there.
Hey, we got to do it.
Anyway, okay. Anything else?
I'd entertain a motion to authorize interim city manager to execute the supplemental agreement number one to the engineering service agreement with HDR, the amount of $360,978 for design and bid phase engineering service for project, where the Oriad Storage Tank and Booster Pump Station replacement.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Vice Mayor Sudden, second by Commissioner Larson, all in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's a five zero. Thank you all. Future agenda items?
Yes, Mayor, for next week, we have a fairly light agenda for you. There's one, one item, regular agenda item that I'm aware of, and that is the annual snow update, so. Don't shadow anything that, that works around the corner, but.
Oh, is this, is this that Neil Teal does?
This is the, this is the Mark Teal Show.
Oh, there we go.
Yes, indeed. And then on the 10th of November, we have some items there for you. We'd like you to give us some feedback on our annual priority statement that we prepare for the legislature. And we will also have a report on the Horizon 2020 Issue Action Report for you, and we'll be providing you a briefing of one of the other utility projects, the Taste and Odor Improvements, that includes setting a project briefing and bid date. And then you can see other items as we have visited with the, the, oh, and then the other item that Casey's reminding me is, we had on the 17th there some of the transportation enhancement, transportation alternatives, I think is the, is the new name of the grant program. This is the KDOT funds for various trail grants and other amenities. We're going to have several grant applications that we would like for you all to consider that the city would submit. And then there's also one that KU would like for us to weigh in on support for, for one of their applications. And we are talking about scheduling that instead for the November the 10th date as well. The deadline is coming up, I think the, the third week of November or so, and we would like to have that on just a little bit earlier than the 17th.
Okay.
And there's just some other details there as we've been working with the mayor and vice mayor, trying to get some of the items scheduled on agendas for you.
One of the things, one of the things that I would want to bring up for the commission and at least get their feelings and at least understanding as to what I think is important. You'll notice on the 17th, we have the concept study for Bob Billings Parkway to Sixth, Parkway to Sixth Street. One of, you know, in the construction geometric improvements, we do not include Castle Drive on that. We thought it was appropriate to consider these two projects separately. I personally believe that Bob Billings Parkway is going to be a more important project at this time because the opening of that new interchange, and I think that we need to be really looking at this because I think we have little idea as to what the effect on that roadway and the adjoining neighborhoods is, you know, traffic goes north and south from Bob Billings. And I think, you know, whatever we do, we really need to concentrate on that first. We'll get to Castle when we get to Castle. If that's the feelings of the commission.
Yeah, it works for me.
Okay. And it may be after the first of the year, just so everybody knows. I, I, you know, I, I really believe that we have to look at Bob Billings first. I, I think it's that big of a deal, so.
One other thing, Mayor, that I, I didn't mention, so for your meeting next week, I understand that city management interviews have been scheduled for November the 8th, so one of the items that we'll have on the agenda is for you to have a recess for executive session on that date as part of your, your agenda for next week, so that you have that item scheduled.
Okay. And Tony, we will have times and all of that set for next week, then we'll have that available?
Yes, I'll work with Greg.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for making those calls today. Okay. All right. Any other future agenda items? Okay. Vice Mayor and I will continue to work on this with Diane and staff, but we will keep you all up to date as to, you know, the arrangement of these things, because we've got some huge things coming up. But we're going to make sure that we don't stack it up on everybody, so just letting you know. Commission items. Next item is calendar. If no, but, no, I didn't want to rush through that, I'm sorry.
No, I have a calendar.
Okay, okay, calendar, please.
Well, I asked staff to add on here the Mental Health Consortium meeting, Wednesday, November 11th, 7:30 a.m. I'm on the Mental Health Consortium now, and we send out a ton of invites because we're looking to create three subgroups of mental health. One is the Crisis Center, one is the Access to Care, because apparently there's a lack of psychiatrists in the area, and the third one has to do with early intervention. And so we're creating these three subgroups, and we sent out kind of a mass invite for people that might be interested in one of those three subgroups that they might want to work on. And so this is sort of like a meet and greet kind of deal. So obviously, I'm going to be there, and I heard a rumor that Lisa Larson RSVP'd. So if a third one comes, I wanted to make sure we've covered our bases.
Very good. Okay. Now we'll see as others look at calendars, et cetera.
Is this an invitation event, or is it not?
Well, it's an invitation event, so we should probably change that. You're right. It's not an open to the public.
Okay.
Yeah, this is more, yeah, thank you.
I'll have Bobby note that, the consortium.
Where's it at again?
Burt Nash on the second floor, they have meeting rooms.
Okay. And so those are all accessible by the public group?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just checking. Okay, any other calendar items?
None that I'm aware of.
Well, if not, I appreciate everybody's hard work, we appreciate all the comments. Staff, thank you for all of the work again that you did on the Albemarle application. I know that there is.
And the work you're going to do.
And the work, yeah. No, I, I know the work that you've done and the commission does, and we really appreciate the, just the professionalism in that whole, whole process, because I mean, I know it's work. So anyway, if nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to adjourn, made by Commissioner Larson, second by Vice Mayor Sudden, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Both adjourned, thank you all.